All right. Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you all. Happy holiday season. Here we go. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is November 12th. This is TRPA's Advisory Planning Commission Meeting, and it's 9:32. The first item is to go to Tracy to determine our quorum. So Tracy, over to you.
Mr. Oling?
Present.
Mr. Drake? Mr. Drew? Mr. Ehrlich? Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Good morning.
Ms. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Lessin? Mr. McNamara?
Here.
Ms. Marillas O'Neil?
Good morning.
Ms. Seiber? Ms. Stala?
Here.
Chief Drennan?
Here.
Mr. Tashera?
Morning.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Here.
Mr. Young? Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Tracy. Thank you all for being here today. Appreciate it. And Tracy, I'm coming right back to you. Please to remind us of the remote meeting rules for the day, please.
For members of the public joining us today, to observe the meeting, visit trpa.gov. Under the calendar header, select Advisory Planning Commission Meeting, Hybrid Meeting for today's date. There you will find a link to the public webinar. To make a comment, raise your hand by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen when the relevant agenda item comes up. If you've joined by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. For informational items, public comment will be taken at the end of the meeting during general public comment. For action or possible action items, public comment will be taken before the commission takes any action. To remote APC members, please raise your hand to speak. Mute your microphone unless you are speaking and keep your camera on if you're able. Remote APC members may not use the chat box to make any comments or to have sidebar conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to take us to item two, which is the approval of our agenda. Staff, do we have any changes to the agenda today?
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. I will go ahead and deem the agenda approved as it was posted for the record. And I'm going to move us on to item three. This is disposition of minutes. We do have a draft set of minutes in our packets from our last meeting, October 8th, 2025. It's on page five. Any members of the APC have any corrections or comments? Steve, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you were the chair of that meeting. So the minute should reflect that. But other than that, another outstanding job.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, I saw that, too.
I don't know if anybody else has comments, but I'm prepared to make a motion.
Any other comments? We're good, Steve. Go ahead.
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting on October 8th, 2025 with the change in the first line.
Second, thank you, Garth, for the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any objections or abstentions anyone would like to make?
I wasn't present, so I'll abstain.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, we're good on the minutes. Now I will move us into the meat of our agenda here. These are our public hearings. This is item four. And Agenda Item 4A is the discussion and possible recommendation of proposed code amendments to remove the one acre minimum lot size requirement for accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, in Nevada, in the basin side of Nevada, and to authorize local jurisdictions to regulate ADUs. Information on this item can be found on page 33 of your packets. And first, I'm going to go to Mr. Hester to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman John Hester, for the record. And I want to give the commission a little bit of context. Today, both of these items are, they're different, but they're related. They have to do with housing. The first one that you just introduced is so that we have a consistent lot size for accessory dwelling units across the basin, as the notice up here says. We, it is not about short-term rentals. That's left to the local jurisdictions, what there are regulations for short-term rentals. And the second item, again, related to housing, will be the Washoe-Tahoe Area Plan. A lot of that is the Phase Two amendments, which essentially our review is finding it in conformance with what the board adopted in December 2023. They have a few other items on parcel and zoning boundaries and tourist commercial or town center density. So I wanted to kind of give you the context that both of these, while they're interrelated or distinct, and what they do and don't cover. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michelle Brown. I'm a long-range planner with TRPA. Thank you, John, for that introduction. As mentioned, I'm here to present on item 4A, the TRPA Code of Ordinance Amendment for accessory dwelling units. The proposed amendment requests, as said, the removal of the one acre minimum parcel size for building an eight accessory dwelling unit in Nevada jurisdiction within the Tahoe Basin. Next slide, please. First, I'd like to start by providing a very brief overview of the benefits of this type of housing and then share some background on this item. Accessory dwelling units, often referred to as ADUs, mother-in-law units or granny flats. Accessory dwelling units are smaller types of housing that share the same parcel as a primary residence. Examples include a detached guest house or a garage with an apartment above, as seen here on this slide. ADUs may have many benefits. For example, they typically cost less to construct than a new multifamily development. As a rental unit, they provide a source of income for the homeowners and can offer housing for local workers that want to live in the basin, which also helps us meet our vehicle miles traveled threshold by the reduction of commuter miles. Because of these benefits and many more, ADUs have been identified as one solution to increase the supply of workforce and affordable housing in the basin. Next slide, please. In 2021, TRPA brought forward amendments of, to the Code of Ordinance as part of the Tahoe Living Strategic Initiative, including the proposal to remove the one acre minimum parcel size for construction of an ADU basin-wide. Under California law, expresses that ADUs must be rented for 30 days or more, which speaks to the concern of ADUs being used as short-term rentals. Where at that time, Washoe and Douglas Counties did not have rules in place prohibiting the use of ADUs as short-term rentals. Because of concerns about ADUs being used as short-term rentals in Nevada, the governing board approved the code amendment only for the California jurisdiction in the basin. We are now bringing this code amendment back for Nevada because, as John mentioned earlier, these, this item and the next item are closely related in the sense that this removal of the one acre parcel requirement in their Tahoe Area Plan Amendment Package will comment the, or complement what we're doing here today with this item. And that item will be heard, the Tahoe Area Plan Amendments will be heard next. Next slide, please. Currently, both Washoe and Douglas Counties require a one acre minimum parcel to allow for the construction of an ADU. This proposed amendment would also bring and establish the consistency basin-wide. The code amendment provides local jurisdictions with the authority to regulate the construction of ADUs through their area plans, general plans, and local development and building codes. Although the construction of ADUs would still be required to comply with TRPA's coverage, height, and growth management regulations. Next slide, please. Yeah, so before we move into questions, I'd like to mention, as of 5:00 PM yesterday, we did receive seven public comments on this item. And with that, I'm happy to address any questions.
All right. Thanks, Michelle and John. Appreciate that. Who has questions for Michelle or comments they'd like to make? Kevin, go ahead.
Thanks, Michelle. Can you just comment on the counties' enforcement mechanisms and programs for assuring that the ADUs would not become an STR?
That is more of a local implementation for the use of STRs. And
Maybe I can hope every county is a little different.
Yeah.
So maybe our, our Washoe or, or, or can.
I apologize for butting in, Mr. Chair. Washoe County has what we call the STR ordinance, Short Term Rental Ordinance, that we adopted that covers all of our short-term rental rules. It has evolved a couple of times, but it now, inside that STR ordinance prohibits ADUs from being STRs in the Lake Tahoe Basin. It doesn't do it down in the Tahoe Meadows, but for the Tahoe, for the Tahoe Basin properties, the ordinance itself prohibits their use as STRs.
Eric, how is it enforced? I mean, that's a, that's the appropriate ordinance. How's it monitored?
We have a really robust and complex STR monitoring system for all the different, you could, it's not just whether or not it's in an ADU. There are significant requirements in Washoe County to be able to own and operate one, everything from parking to fire requirements. And so we have actually hired a, a code enforcement person who is only for STRs in Tahoe. And that is the primary and primary enforcement mechanism. But through the actual application process, what you have to go through to get the application, and then you have to reapply every couple of years. And so it, we just have a really robust but somewhat complex permitting and application process that includes a, an entire process for monitor, monitored. If you'd like to know more about it, we're a little bit proud of it. We'd love to, you know, talk to you about it more in depth if you want to learn about it.
Thanks, Eric, for jumping in on that. Who else has anything? Let me look online. Got a hand raised online. Kate, I see your hand up. Would you like to jump in?
Yes, let me start. So Douglas County, we, we didn't move forward with this as of yet. One of the questions I, I wasn't able to ask prior to when this, this conversation had come up is the setback requirements and building separation. I think that's one of the things, just from a planning perspective, that I'm, I just want to confirm that this won't impact setback requirements and building separation, you know, for fire. Obviously, fire would have to approve, but just for, for those concerns that people might have requiring, you know, enabling these ADUs on such small properties.
Thanks, Kate. Let's see if we can get an answer for you. I think it's just removing the one acre minimum, right? No changes to setbacks or any other standards. Is that right?
Yes, this is Michelle Brown for the record. That is correct. This code amendment is just simply removing the one acre minimum lot size. So it allows for additional properties to allow for the construction of a ADU on their site. And setbacks will not change. Those are implied by this local jurisdiction. So this code amendment simply is just to remove the one acre.
John Hester, for the record, Kate, the way, the best way to probably view this is by us removing that requirement at the regional level, it's basically enabling you to decide what you want to do at the local level.
Okay, so Kate Marillos, for the record. So if it's a 10-foot separation between buildings right now, if, if we are approving the one acre minimum, removing that requirement, it, it would still require, no matter what size, that building separation from the main dwelling unit and the ADU.
Yeah, that's not addressed, John Hester again, that's not addressed in this amendment. That would be something that would be in your development code or area plan.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Okay.
Thanks, Kate. Other final thoughts? Eric?
Robert.
Robert?
Robert Ehrlich.
Looking right.
Out of curiosity, are there any ADUs in either Washoe or Douglas at this point in time? Handful. Okay. And I had one other comment that's kind of on the
What was the answer to that question?
Oh.
There's a few, but, you know, they
I apologize, Eric Young, Washoe County. There's a handful. There's, they do require the one acre right now, and that does limit them significantly. And they also require what's called an administrative review, which is a, an in-house discretionary permit. And so that, that's a, that's a little bit of a deterrent as well, not, not a huge one. But we do, we do process ADUs up there from time to time. Often attached instead of detached.
And I have another question on the environmental review thing. I was looking at water quality, on changes in absorption, drainage patterns, rate or amount of surface water runoff, so that a 20-year, one-hour storm could be handled on-site. Again, these probably isn't going to apply to a large number of properties, but with an additional dwelling, I think I saw something saying that ADUs typically 70% of them have one car and the other 30% either have no car or more than one car. I didn't know if that data came from Tahoe or somewhere else. But what my concern is, and applies to, you know, rentals or other houses, is I think there will be more compaction, there'll be more soil disturbance, and the number of cars that are parked on areas that are not considered coverage may increase. So I was wondering if there might be a way to, when evaluating the particular projects, assess the efficacy of the existing BMPs on the property as part of the project review. My, my concern is, let's say if you're, you have a parcel with a BMP, maybe you're building something on top of a garage or something else, and then you might only look at the BMPs for that section of it. And you might have BMPs that are 20 years old, that are no longer functioning. It'd be the same issue like on, on, you know, other rentals and stuff, or even single-family houses. But I'm, I'm concerned that I think there could be an increase in the ability to handle the runoff unless we confirm that the entire parcel is adequately BMPed. I don't know what the best way to address that. I was wondering in the environmental document if some mitigation could be included to specify that.
Um, I can speak a little to that. The any construction of the ADUs at this point would still be required to comply with the TRPA coverage, height, growth management regulations, and those identifiers for BMPs would go through the permitting process at that time. We also have this ability to, as a homeowner, they can apply for bonus units to be able to construct their ADU, basically a development right for free in exchange for a deed-restricted property. And there's a bonus unit boundary. So those are typically located within a area of a town center, and there's access to facilities that are walkable or transit that is able to give them the ability to move about, about the basin. So that will potentially cut down the need for vehicle or less use of a vehicle.
I can, John Hester, jump in here and just answer your question, Robert, and just all the questions about things like setbacks, BMPs. No other regulation of TRPA's is being relaxed. All this is saying is, if you as a county or the city want to have ADUs on lots less than one acre, that's up to you. That's all it's saying. If you want to have requirement, they can't be STRs. I think that's already in the California law anyway, for that side of the basin. We're just changing that one thing. That's all we're changing. So there's stuff to meet all the requirements for everything, whether it's in the local plans or our plans.
With the review of that, you know, again, a, a proposal to, and this might be up to the local jurisdictions also, with the review of a proposal to have an ADU on a property involve an a full assessment of the functioning of existing BMPs for a parcel that has a BMP certificate.
Whenever we permit, when we process a permit, we check the BMPs to make sure they have an active cert. If they, their BMPs are active and certified, and we check to see if the change is going to have any impact on that. So that's part of our permitting process.
Alyssa?
Yeah, I'd also just like to note, whenever we do an ADU permit, we look, like John said, we look at the, at the BMPs for the whole property. And we also look at whether there's opportunities to park off of pavement, and we ask that they install like boulders or any sort of barriers that would prevent them from doing that. Just wanted to note that.
Thanks, Alyssa. Hitch?
Yeah, I can speak on behalf of the city on that. So when a, when a project does come in and they want to build an ADU, city staff does look at the existing BMPs on-site to make sure that they are maintained and they are properly working as part, because it's a project, so it triggers, triggers compliance. So we'll look at the old BMPs to make sure that they're functioning. And secondly, as Alyssa said, we also look at the parking situation. If there are areas that look like it's possible they may park offsite, we will require bollards or, or, or boulders. That said, most ADUs in California ways aren't required to have parking because most are within half an hour of a bus stop. So.
I appreciate the fact that, again, the bonus units are designed to be only available in areas which are near transit.
Thanks for that discussion. Any final thoughts? Ellery, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. This is just a general question. I know that TRPA adopted these code amendments for California a couple of years ago. And I was just curious to know if California had any kind of response. Have you noticed an uptick in ADU permit applications?
Well, the city, yes, we have, especially because we actually market our free units of use for the construction of ADUs in exchange for a deed restriction prohibiting them from being used as STR. But the last year or so, we have seen an uptick. I mean, right now, I think we've, we've used about 40 or 50 of our TAUs, converted them to units of use and, and have made it a bunch of ADUs, as well as multifamily for rent product.
Yeah, this is Crystal Jacobson for the record with Placer County. And we, the same for Placer, we have seen an uptick in interest in ADU construction since the state law changed. So, yeah.
We're, we're trying still. We're, we have a few. We've seen a slight uptick, but we're, we're still trying. The development right requirement is, is still a high bar. So.
Okay, thank you. Just curious to know if it was trending towards the policy objective that we're trying to meet of increasing workforce housing opportunities, increasing more rental opportunities for people to live here in the basin.
Yep, absolutely. Final thoughts? Okay, I think we're good on this from APC's side. So let's go to public comment on this item. Again, this is item 4A. For members of the public in the room that would like to make a public comment, please come up to the podium and turn on the microphone and state your name. After that, we'll go to members of the public who are joining us online. Again, under trpa.gov, in the calendar section, click on APC Meeting, November 12th, 2025. There you'll find our link to the webinar. You can, let me just skip ahead here. You can raise your hand now by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing *9 on your telephone, and you'll be called upon and unmuted by a TRPA staff member at that time. First, we'll go to members of the public in the room. So good morning.
Good morning, Doug Flaherty. I'll be speaking as a resident for Incline Village, Nevada. He passes. Thanks for making our lawsuit against Washoe County much easier because this will be changed circumstances to validate our ability to file the writ of mandate. Gosh, how much more of your oversight responsibility are you going to continue to abdicate? Why are you even here? Let's just turn everything back over to the, to the counties. Let them do whatever they want. Really disturbing. Actually, you mentioned prohibitions against STRs. I've made a public comment on this in the past. This is actually going to encourage and enable STRs now? Because as a young couple said a couple of years ago to the TRPA governing board, we're just going to move into our ADUs and we're going to rent out our, our homes. Have you done an analysis on that? How many ADUs could possibly be built in Incline Village, whether there have been any or not? You're going to have a cumulative impact of allowing, I don't know, what, 3,000 residents in Washoe or in Incline? We can technically have 3,000 ADUs. Just incredible that you guys don't provide any leadership on this. Not to mention the cumulative impact of the amount of traffic affecting the already degraded official Washoe County six-hour evacuation time for Incline Village, Nevada. Incredible. Let's just wash your hands of it, right? Now you're going to push it back to the counties and, you know, as I said, that'll make our lawsuit easier. Yeah, I don't know how long the abdication of oversight is going to continue on you guys' part to allow this stuff to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
It's okay. Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance, 55-year resident, 50-year Realtor, Nevada and California broker. Yeah, this is actually going to make housing more expensive because when you add an ADU, it makes the value more. So it'll be, create less housing that's affordable. And since you have no deed restrictions about income for people renting these or any sort of oversight on that, you say you want to make things more affordable. Well, anybody can rent these because you have no cap on that. So how does that all work? When you say you're doing this to make things easier and more affordable. I mean, I, I think that Governor Lombardo's idea of attainable housing, 150% of the average median income is really an excellent idea. Why don't you do something like that? You keep saying you want to make things more affordable for people, and that's why you're doing this. It's going to make, most of the people, and by the way, these are going to be very expensive. You know, they're not going to be cheap. I build stuff and, so let's say a minimum of 400,000 probably for the unit. So it's going to be people that are wealthy that are able to do this and, or else they're going to have to short-term rental it so that they can make enough money. So anyway, yeah, you're not achieving what you say you want to achieve. So I think you should go back to the drawing board and put some more caveats on this before you just do a blanket approval. At least in Placer County, they have done that with making it deed-restricted. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Other members of the public in the room? Come on up.
Diane Becker, full-time resident in Incline Village. And I actually came to speak on the other matter, but I do have a couple of suggestions on this item. I really do agree that this should wait until you do a full fire evacuation study. But if you're going to do it, I think you've got to require rental to full-time workers. Otherwise, you're just going to get one-month rentals. I have property in Ojai that I do one-month rentals. I mean, they're short-term rentals. They're people that come up for a month, and then other people come up for a month. They're all vacationers. This isn't going to go to workforce. It doesn't help your workforce issue. I think you need to require a minimum rental period of at least six months, full-time workers. And you need to require an Incline Village onsite parking. And you need to require an Incline Village onsite parking. You cannot even look at what's on the streets because you can't park on the streets for most, in almost any area. Certainly anywhere I live, I I know two people who have parking that could be on the street in the winter. So from November on, you have no parking. So you do need to require that. And you need to require that for the very reason that was stated, which is you do not want to have more and more, you know, dirt and debris going into your storm drains. I think this needs to be thought through more carefully. Incline Village is very different than many of the other areas. The reason it's called Incline is because of the streets and the incline everywhere. And and if you need to really think about it more, wait till it snows and go up there when the snow storage starts. There is nowhere to park on streets. Anyways, I do agree with with the other comments that this should await a time when when you have done a fire evacuation study because every additional person that you put up there is an additional person that will need to be evacuated. And I hope that you have all heard what our fire chief has said, which is they are planning already with the population there to have some people shelter in place because they cannot now get everyone out. So you really do need to think about whether you're going to protect our safety in the event of disaster. And you're the advisory planning group. You're not the TRPA board. You're the advisory group that's supposed to think through the issues and I hope you will really think seriously about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. My name is John Epalito. I've been on the North Shore for about thirty years. Before that, I was down here for two. I'm a real estate broker, twenty-seven years, not as long as Ann. I had a question for this lady, this nice lady over here that did the presentation. I don't, I'd like to understand how increasing ADUs decreases the miles traveled. And I guess you're probably seeing that in South Lake Tahoe, all these less people coming to South Lake now that we have all these additional ADUs, correct? Before I was a real estate broker, I was a teacher. I taught for six years. One elementary, three years middle school and two years high school. And I was a math teacher and I would sure like to explore the logic, and I did logic sometimes, especially in the middle school. I'd sure like to explore that logic behind increasing the number of ADUs decreases the miles traveled. And you can't tell me people are walking a half a mile to the bus stop. And and Ann's right, they're not poor people building these, especially in Washoe County and Incline Village and Douglas County. South Lake Tahoe is a little different animal. It it's very frustrating, the logic. I do think I did have some middle school kids that would have had a lot of fun with that project. Some of the more animated middle school kids. The first twelve, fifteen years I was selling real estate in Tahoe, I used to tell people that this basin is never going to be overbuilt because of the TRPA. I didn't know that I was lying to those people. Somewhere along the line, the TRPA lost their way. I don't know exactly when that happened, but thank goodness for the last ten, twelve, fifteen years, I have not been telling people the basin's not going to be overbuilt because of the TRPA. Because now the TRPA is more about city planning, working for the developers. And it's very disappointing as somebody who came here because of the beauty and a lot of clients of mine came here because of the beauty and in these town centers and all this BS that TRPA is doing, not every place is South Shore. West Shore is a lot different, Incline is a lot different. And TRPA is trying to cast a broad net and wants everybody to have sixty-five foot buildings and all this stuff. It doesn't fit in most of Tahoe. South Shore, almost. It's just very frustrating. And the thing that concerns me the most about what you guys are doing down here is the fire evacuation. So far, the Angora Fire, many say that was a failed evacuation. When it hits incline and the winds blowing the way it blows in incline and the fire starts down by the water and comes up, a lot of people are going to die if TRPA doesn't do the right thing. And so far, I'm not seeing TRPA do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Other members in the room? Okay, seeing none. Catherine, any hands online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are two hands raised online. Kathy Julian, please unmute to make your comment.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kathy Julian. I'm a permanent resident of Incline Village. I did send in a comment on this, but I'm unclear that it's I don't see it online posted to the website, so I'm unclear if you folks got it. First, there is no evidence in Tahoe Basin that deed restrictions can be adequately monitored and enforced. TRPA's track record on deed restriction enforcement is very poor in Incline Village. TRPA has its hands full simply enforcing the basin BMPs and adding ADUs to that is is simply a non-starter. I reached out to Tahoe Prosperity Center once and asked them, what is the most effective way to monitor for deed restrictions? And their consultants that they had hired for our housing survey in twenty twenty-one responded by an email, which I can share with you, that you really need a dedicated housing authority, housing entity. It won't happen with TRPA. It won't happen with the county. They specifically say you can't leave this to the county or government entity. It truly needs to be a specialized housing authority. That's the first point. Where's the evidence that ADUs will be built primarily for our workforce? I mean, you have like fifty-eight permitted thus far in Tahoe, California, but some fifty-seven percent are not deed restricted, signaling that they could be used for anything, including, and this is where there's this STR loophole, you can rent out something for thirty plus one day and somehow avoid the STR requirements or limitations. So I can very well see people building these ADUs and renting them out for thirty days plus one. The third point is relaxing the minimum acreage for an ADU will simply enhance the value of those parcels as they'll increase their square footage. You know, I'm roughly estimating you build a one thousand square foot ADU and that's going to add hundreds of thousands of dollars to your property value, making those modest properties on flat spaces even more unaffordable to our missing middle. And and finally, about the achievable housing, AD deed restrictions for achievable housing, as Ann pointed out, there is no limitation on net income. There's no limitation on wealth. It's simply do you work thirty hours a week in the basin? So that is a massive loophole. So please reconsider these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Next hand up is Pamela Mahoney-Sigdenis. Pamela, please unmute to make your comment.
Good morning. I'd like to underscore all of the public comments that have come before me. Every point that's being made is critical and should be considered paramount in your decision-making this morning. I'd like to also address one of the earlier questions regarding code enforcement on short-term rentals. The information you heard was a bit misleading. We've been following this issue now for many years. There are hundreds of short-term rentals in Incline Village and Crystal Bay. Only a portion of those are actually licensed. Many are unlicensed and technically illegal, but they're advertised on all the platforms for people all over the world to rent from. It's also important to understand there is one code enforcement individual. This individual, while I'm sure works very hard, is only available Monday through Friday. The vast majority of short-term rentals happen on the weekend, which leaves a big gap. What I would request this board do is get the data, do the diligence, find out how many are illegally operating, how many actual complaints are being made. And frankly, none of this information is available to the public. It should be. It should be very easy for us to get our hands on this. So first and foremost, please don't make a decision based on information that's not available. Secondly, I really want to emphasize that removing the minimum parcel and relaxing the lot width and setback standards will intensify development in constrained areas. We already have a problem with our infrastructure. North Lake Tahoe residents will face disastrous evacuation delays if you continue to put more buildings and ADUs in our already congested neighborhoods. This is just a poor idea. I want you to also consider that we're getting a very big snowstorm starting this weekend. That's the beginning of many, many other challenges, which is getting people safely around and getting roads cleared. If you have more people and more vehicles, you are compromising first responders. Please, you have the authority and you have an advisory position. Do the right thing, prioritize public safety and ensure that you are not endangering current and future residents and visitors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pamela.
One more hand raised. Alan Miller, please unmute to make your comment.
Hello, I'm Alan Miller, civil and environmental engineer. I'm speaking to augment my written comments for the record. Among those comments, I pointed out that you had a defective public notice for this item. And that's because you need to make your proposed amendments available to the public twenty days in advance of consideration and inform the public that the documents are available for review. I think the law is pretty clear on that and I think it's pretty clear that TRPA skips all that when they do their seven-day trot out to the public and run this through the mill. And I covered double standards for California and Nevada. We have the same thing here. The ADU shouldn't have been allowed in California if they couldn't have been allowed in Nevada at that time. TRPA is a regional planning agency and just seems to forget that, I guess, that they can't have double standards for the region, even though there's two states. I don't think these amendments will lead to any improvements in workforce housing. I agree with the previous commenter about just increasing the value of the properties and incentives for for more wealthy people to come. I I also echo the evacuation issues that I think TRPA has embarked on a program of increasing urbanization in our region. And they haven't really thought it through and the evacuation issue has to be primary because that's public safety. Like Mr. Flaherty said, your MOUs are a big problem. You're just delegating everything to the locals under illegal MOU provisions. You're not following the law. There's no transparency with regard to what's happening with the Nevada MOUs, which are currently suspended and not enforced. So that's that's terrible. Finally, your findings fail to include cumulative effects analysis and tracking as required for all projects. Code section four point four point two, A through E is shined on as for every project, TRPA has no ability to follow its code with regard to analyzing cumulative effects and never does, and that needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
And we have one more hand raised. Helen Neff, please unmute to make your comment.
Hi, this is Helen Neff in Incline Village. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So I sent my written comment. I wasn't going to make public comment, but I just am moved to do so. First of all, I want to endorse the prior public comment made, especially in terms of evacuation and public safety. So TR, when I read the packet for this meeting, not only this item, but the next item, you talk about town centers and you talk about walkable town centers and you use that as a justification for these amendments. TRPA very enthusiastically approved a couple of years ago a Vision Zero safety plan and enthusiastically approved an active transportation plan. There was nothing in those plans for the safety of Incline Village Town Center. This morning, a pedestrian was killed on State Route twenty-eight. I don't know the details. I do know that I was hit by a car crossing State Route twenty-eight in a crosswalk. I do know this latest crash has brought back PTSD. You have to think of how your decisions are causing consequences for our community. It's one person, I know. It's easy to say the person was speeding. It's easy to blame whoever you want to blame. Who are you going to blame when there is a big fire and we can't evacuate? Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised to comment.
All right. Thank you, Catherine. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the APC. We heard a lot of comments there. Deed restrictions, workforce housing, fire evacuation, parking, short-term rentals, public noticing, transportation, safety. Thank you for those comments. We do obviously take your comments very seriously. We we do have two hundred and, sorry, hundred and sixty-seven pages of public comment here attached to this item on the website that we've all seen. I guess I'll just ask staff, Graham, John, Michelle, would you like to respond to any of those comments before we ask additional questions?
I'll I'll start, John Hester. I'll start and invite my colleagues to join in. I don't know that I have every one of those down, but when people talk about ADUs creating more development, they don't, they require development rights. There's a set amount of development rights in the basin. When you use a development right for a small ADU, you don't get to use it for something else. So that's, it's not creating more development rights. The logic is, somebody spoke about the logic and you all have probably heard this testimony. I know we've heard it a number of times at the board. People like sheriff's deputies, utility workers, people like that have sat here in the public comments. I can't live here because I can't afford it, so I have to drive up from Reno or up from wherever they have to drive up from. And it would be nice if there was housing here. If there's housing here so they can live and work here, then that's what we talk about, reducing the vehicle miles traveled. They don't have to commute every day. So that's the logic there. A lot of the issues brought up like short-term rentals, how they're enforced, lot size setbacks. All of those things are set in the area plans or master plans or general plans of the counties and the city. All we are simply doing, as I stated before, is saying you can now, if you want to go less than one acre in lot size for ADUs, you can put an ADU on a lot that's smaller than an acre. That's already required that local governments allow that in California. There's, you know, we have, if we didn't do that, then California jurisdictions couldn't do what the state law says. And we didn't change that for, as as Michelle said, we didn't change that in Nevada because we had a couple of, at least one of the local governments say, until we work on this, we'd like you to leave it at one acre. So we've, we've now been, people have said, local government said, you can change it now. We've got that addressed in our plans. So all we're doing is saying, everything else applies. You decide the things that are your level. We keep doing the requirements that are our level, but now you can use less than one acre. So it's a very simple amendment. And a lot of other issues have been loaded onto this that this doesn't really address. Some of that gets addressed in the next item. And so that's kind of my general comments. I don't know that I covered everything. Invite Michelle, Alyssa in the audience, or Graham that had anything, if you want.
This is Graham Saint Michel. I can address the notice issue that Mr. Miller brought up. That the notice here is is all compliant with our compact in the code. Mr. Miller is conflating something in the compact in the code. The compact requires twenty-day notice for this for this meeting. When we take that to the governing board, the draft ordinance, again, for the governing board, the draft ordinance needs to be available for the public. needs to be available for the public 20 days in advance of the governing board meeting. That will happen. It's already, we've, we've published it now. It's part of this record, a public record in the open. So appreciate that comment, but it's, it's not, it's not accurate.
Thank you, Graham. And John, Michelle, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, there was one question regarding the increase of ADUs and how that affects or reduces vehicle miles traveled. That was spoken in context of the bonus units and the bonus unit area, and those are typically around town centers as stated in the presentation. These these statistics can be found online. We have LTinfo.com and that can be delineated, those statistics on the vehicle miles traveled, and it has been shown that most of these ADUs that have been constructed within bonus unit boundaries show that a lot of these residents do work locally and may or may not have a car. So having that ability and access to these transit options as well as the bikeability, we have a strong network of routes that can be utilized as well as a form of travel. So I would encourage to to the audience as well as any other community member to look at our website for those types of statistics.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. All right, APC members, let's jump in here with final thoughts. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Steve DeShara, representing the Tahoe Transportation District, but obviously with a broader portfolio sitting at this body. I just had a question for clarification of staff. In the environmental checklist, there are two yeses, one under land use where there's a yes under expand or intensify an existing non-conforming use, but the discussion underneath seems to be inconsistent with the yes. Can somebody explain that to me? And then I have a similar one, which is the other one is under population where it says alter the location distribution density or growth rate of the human population plan for the region. Yes. The discussion doesn't seem to be consistent with that.
It's Michelle Brown for the record. I'd like to invite Alyssa Benjurdis, Mike. Alyssa Gutierrez for the record. It sounds like those are both a typo, but I will I'll double check and get back to you.
It seemed like a typo to me, but I wanted to correct the record, so thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And if, I guess if there is an amendment needed there, Graham, you can advise us on how we can.
Yeah, correct. Part of the, part of the reason for this meeting and is to, to catch things like that. So we will take a look and before it goes to the governing board, make sure that we have have this part worked out.
Thanks, Graham. And Steve, hitch.
Mr. Hester, I just had a clarification. There was some comments about bonus units being used to construct ADUs and income restrictions. It's my understanding that only a portion of the bonus units can be used for achievable and the rest are restricted to affordable and moderate. Is, is that correct?
That's correct. There's, John Hester for the record. That's correct. There are portions of the bonus unit pool designated for each of those. I don't know the percentages off the top. Maybe Alyssa does, maybe not.
Yeah, 25% of the total pool available can be used for achievable. The, another 25% for moderate income housing and then the 50% for affordable.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Others? Kate, I see your hand is up online. Why don't we go to you?
Thank you. I, I apologize earlier for bringing up setbacks. I think it was just important for clarification. But thank you, John and Melissa for clearing, clearing that up as far as what this amendment is. Because sometimes it can get confusing. This is really a high level regarding TRPA and allowing the ADUs less than, than one acre. And I think that helps, you know, Douglas County, as a representative of Douglas County, moving forward with this. If we were to bring forward this amendment, I think it's important to realize that as a jurisdiction, we could move forward with an amendment, but we could add other restrictions to it. And I think that that's what's important. You know, from a planning perspective and, and for the public to understand too, is that as far as the local jurisdictions moving forward, we can add other restrictions as far as doing these ADUs and where you can do them when it's, when it's less than one acre. I just want to make sure that that's correct. As it stands, just because you're changing TRPA does not mean that it would be allowed, for instance, in Douglas County until we move forward. And we could also add additional elements to this amendment.
Thank you. Kate, this is John Hester. That's absolutely correct. And I know a lot of the APC members already know this, but I'll just say it so that everybody else knows. One of the cornerstones of the 2012 amendment package to the regional plan was that where a local government felt like it could take on a better job directly working with the communities in that local government within parameters that are set in the regional plan, project size and certain topics, that they should work directly with the communities because they're closer to the communities than we are. And so that's where the idea of area plans came from. And we've seen most of the all of the jurisdictions in the, in the basin have either completed or have underway area plans for almost all of the basin. There's a few parts of the city of South Lake Tahoe that are not currently underway, but the vast majority of area in the basin is now subject to or subject to area plans that exist or being developed. And those kinds of nuances that are not a regional one-size-fits-all kind of solution are designed to be addressed at the area plan level. And we think that's best. The local governments think that's best. And, and that's what we've tried to do within the regional parameters. So you're absolutely right, Kate, and thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Kate. Jump in. This is Graham St. Michelle. Just going back to Mr. DeShara's comment. I was able to look at the IEC and I can confirm for the record, those are both. If you look at the discussions underneath those, those items, they should have both been checked no and inadvertently were checked yes. So just for the record, that's a typo. We'll get that fixed for sure when we take this to the governing board, but want to make sure that the members here have that information.
Thank you, Graham and Steve for catching that. Steve?
Thank you, Counselor Steve DeShara, for the record. Under determination, Graham, there's also a yes under A, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to separate out double negatives from affirmatives. Does that fall into the same category?
Yes, that's, that's correct. The, the yes there is kind of like, as you say, the way that that's worded. The proposed project could not have a significant effect on the environment. A finding of no significant effect shall be prepared, and that's that's correctly marked, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Robert?
Um, and then comments on the possibility of the property owner moving into the ADU and then renting out the main house as a one month and one day rental. Well, that, that was an interesting comment. I wonder, I'm not sure if there's really any adverse, really adverse impacts from that. Is there some discussion about what the potential, you know, are there some other impacts that we haven't considered if that in fact happens?
The enforcement end of TRPA would be for the deed restricted units. And the state and local would imply or would implement the restrictions around the deed, not deed, the non-deed restricted units. As California has on their state law books, the rule of 30 days, no less, and it's considered not a short-term rental. So that is their sort of catch for being able to instill where there is some parameters around preventing it from becoming a short-term rental. There is in, I believe, Washoe County, as Eric alluded to earlier, there's a countywide rule of their ability to restrict STR usage for ADUs. So whether it's deed restricted or not, they have the ability to step in and enforce that.
This is John Hester. Let me try it. See if I can answer your question because I don't think that was what you were asking is the impact if somebody lives in an ADU and rents out their house. The way I, I think this will address it. I'm going to get kind of technical, but when we do our land use forecast and transportation modeling, we assume certain occupancy levels. And so if you were to assume an occupancy level for the regular house and an occupancy level for the ADU, if you switch those, I don't think it would make any difference unless you all of a sudden rent it out, all of the housing in the basin on a more full-time basis than we do now. It's because, and there are a lot of second homes. I don't have the number in, in, in my head, but I think you would have to say a lot of that second home stock becomes full-time stock. And that's something we talk about in our assumptions when we do the regional transportation plan update. But my, my recollection is we didn't see the occupancy rate going up significantly because of something like that sort of switch. We did see it going up a little bit from the Zoom town kind of, you know, the a lot of people during COVID started, more people started working, living and working from home than before, but I think I think that has gone back down some. And we've got people in our science and data department and people in our reporting and accountability department that actually track that. And I could try to follow up and get you an answer on that, but I, I don't think there's any impact from switching from living in your main house to the ADU and having the main house rented. If that helps, I think that's where you were going.
Yeah. And one other thought, if the owner moves into the ADU, is, is there an issue of achievable or affordable or, you know, do they have to meet some income requirements or so in that case?
That would depend on the deed restriction. So I would assume if you had a deed restricted ADU that had to be rented to a certain income level and you switched your house to being the ADU, that deed restriction would still apply. But I don't know that we've actually had that situation happen. We have around 300 deed restricted units that Michelle happens to be the one that tracks. I know the jurisdictions have deed restrictions as well, and some of them are for different things and they track them differently. So I don't know if that is something like Placer or Washoe or the city could talk, speak to, but from our perspective, I think for our 300, give or take, that's how we would look at it.
Yeah, for the record, this is Crystal Jacobson of Placer County. So in Placer, it would, we'd follow whatever the restriction is. So if the restriction is for workforce housing or achievable housing, you have to demonstrate that you're working in the region and there's not an affordability factor in it. If, if the primary owner was to move into the ADU, they would still need to meet that, whatever that restriction calls for. So if it's an affordable restriction, they would have to meet the affordability factors of that restriction as well. So it doesn't change. It wouldn't, it wouldn't change the restriction if the primary owner moved into the ADU.
Same as the city with the exception of the city deed restriction, which is restricts ADUs from being used for short-term rentals. There's no income restriction for units of use that are, that are given to the property by the city. It's just a restriction on the STR.
Hang on, Eric. Is it relevant to that discussion right there? Okay, sorry. Go ahead. I just had Kevin waiting.
I'm fine with. Didn't know how long Kevin was waiting. Eric Young, Washoe County. I may have to repeat some of these for the next, next item. I, I know that there's some similar questions that may come up that are more specific to Washoe County, but I want to say that, you know, all of us have now. You know, this ADU discussion is becoming more relevant all the time. We just had some questions about how the California jurisdictions, have they seen an increase? And they were able to report that they have, which means that they're tracking it. Washoe County is trying to track our ADUs, even though they're on an acre right now. To, and, and we have, like I said, we have this discretionary process that you have to go through to get one. So that makes it a little easier for us to track. I mean, it helps us understand whether or not there is, you know, community opposition because all the neighbors are getting noticed. You know, we never hear back from anybody, but that's a side note. So I think we're kind of at the beginning stages of this. I would encourage all the other jurisdictions, which I think they're already doing, but along with us to do to collect as much data as they can on on their ADUs, what kind of code compliance issues they may have, what kind of, you know, sizes. We're very interested in size. We're very interested in lot size. The whole thing, any data that we can get data. We love data. And one of the great things about it is it helps us verify or push aside our assumptions. And we hear, we've heard a lot of assumptions already about not only what if the owner moves in, but that's all that's going to happen. The owner's going to move in and it's just going to be an STR. Or it's all going to be rich people. Or it's all going to be something, something, it's, something's always going to be something to the other. Well, let's collect data and find out what's going on. But I think even, we may discuss this for in the next one, but i- in Washoe County, we're not, we're not really that concerned a- about trying to engineer it. Our assumption until the data shows us otherwise, is that some, sometimes the owner will move out and it'll be an STR. Sometimes it'll just be a giant rich, rich, a big unit. But sometimes it'll be somebody's mother moving back in. Sometimes it'll be somebody's kids moving back in. Those are the phone calls that we get. Those are the phone calls that we have to say no to right now. It's, all these other things might happen, and we assume that from time to time, yeah, they're going to happen. But these other things that we want to happen are going to happen as well. And so we're not trying to engineer our ADU world. We're trying to enable our ADU world and keep data on it and learn about where it goes, and we'll make adjustments in the future. But I think really trying to assume that it's all going to go one way or the other. It is really not in best keeping of our way of, of, of and this board's way of really trying to apply science and data whenever that we can. And so, you know, Washoe County's approach is just simply, thank you for enabling this. We're going to put our restriction, restrictions around it, just like Kate suggested. And we're going to keep really good data on what happens and we're going to share that with you. So that, that's really all I wanted to throw out.
Thank you. That's helpful, Eric. Appreciate that. Let's go to you, Kevin.
Similar to Eric in that I can think of some examples of people that I know who could not stay in their homes if they didn't have an ADU to rent. It's a long-term residence, kids in school, a couple of single parents I can think of that could not be in their home and would leave the area if they couldn't have an ADU. So there, there's always a flip side and a different way of looking at the potential benefits or complications of having ADUs. Also stress that this is very incremental allowing. It doesn't mean it's mandated or that it's going to happen or that we're going to see a flood of them. They are, it is expensive to build an ADU. We know that and that the, by nature of the economy is going to probably limit how many are actually built. There are opportunities sometimes to create an ADU with minor remodels that can be done, again, keep people in their homes, bring mom back to town, generate rental income. And I just think the theme here is small incremental change as opposed to, you know, large projects, which is what I personally would like to see. With regard to the comments about evacuation, it's something I've been really thinking a lot about, something I've been reading about and reading some of the studies. And I just want to point out that the day users and tourism traffic generate significantly more trips and cars that contribute to our evacuation problem than something like that contribute to our evacuation problem than um, something like um, incremental addition of ADUs ever will in our communities. So I don't want to conflate the two. They are linked, but when it comes to safer evacuation and better management of evacuation, we have a lot more to focus on with regard to tourism than we do with incremental changes to residential ADUs.
Thanks, Kevin. Good comment. Okay. Final thoughts before we go to our motions on this item. Seeing none, we do have two motions to make on this item. If we can put those on the screen, we've got them. Um, anyone care to make a motion? Motion number one.
Chair, I'll make first motion. I'll make a motion to recommend that the TRPA governing board approves required findings found in attachment A, including a finding of no significant effect for adoption of the amendment to chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Eric.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, ask a question for clarification on, on the uh, way the motion is written? Says attachment A, but there's several other attachments that I think are related to A that are labeled differently in terms of like the environmental checklist to C. I just want to make sure that all the things that are under attachment A and following that in the packet are included in this motion reference to attachment A.
Thank you, Graham Saint Michel. I'm taking a look right now just to make sure I understand the question.
If you look at attachment A, it's the findings of no significant effect in Fonzie, but there's other attachments behind that that are also relevant to the motion, I believe.
The findings are attachment A, including, including a finding of no significant effect.
Um, but the checklist is listed as attachment C because I think it's a cut and paste from another document.
Yeah, but the finding of no significant effect is also included under attachment A.
Okay. I just want to make sure because I think all of those things are relevant to the motion.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, including the item that we all agree to be amended in terms of what's in the checklist.
Uh, we can, we can remake the motion is um, to approve the required, required findings, attachment A, including a finding of no significant effect. And um, I mean, the, the ordinance, sorry, I'm, I'm getting a little tripped up here if I'm misunderstanding, but the ordinance is in the second motion. So I believe this is a pretty typical how we do these, but um, the, the board is, I'm sorry, that you're recommending to the governing board to, to approve the required findings, attachment A, which is correct. And then you have motion two, which we'll get to, which is a motion to recommend the governing board approve the ordinance, which is attachment B, I believe. Um.
Checklist is attachment C, is it?
Yeah, but the, the checklist is just supporting material in the record that, that is what the um, findings, including the finding of no significant effect is based upon.
Okay.
So we don't need to reference in the motion, the checklist.
Okay. Other than to make the corrections that we all.
Yeah, and we've gotten that in the, in the record.
Okay.
I think so. We're good.
Thank you.
It's, it's always good to go through this. I appreciate it, you know, and we can make sure that we're getting it right. So I think we're good in this case. Thanks.
Thanks, Graham. And Steve, okay, we've got a motion. We had some discussion. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Crystal, thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? We're good. Tracy, we're going to come to you for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Stoller?
Aye.
Mr. Young? Chief Drennan?
Sorry.
Could you repeat that, Chief Drennan? I didn't quite catch it.
Uh, that was, uh, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tishera?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Marillas O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, we've got a second motion, which is related to attachment B, which is the ordinance amendment.
I'll, I'll make a motion on the second one. A motion to recommend that the TRPA governing board approve and adopt ordinance two zero two five dash blank, attachment B, amending ordinance two zero two five dash zero five as amended to adopt amendments to chapter 31 of the TRPA Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Got a motion by Crystal, a second by Mr. Young. Any questions on this motion? Okay, Tracy, back to you, please.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Marillas O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Tishera?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Mr. Young? Chief Drennan?
Yes.
Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. And thank you for all the discussion. Um, very good. In-depth analysis, in-depth analysis there as usual. Um, if we could hold comments in the, I wanted to say the courtroom, um, in this room from the audience, that would be very appreciated by us. Thank you. I'm going to move us on now to agenda item four B. And this is going to be a discussion and recommendation regarding proposed amendments to the Washoe County Tahoe area plan. This includes amendments to conform with the TRPA phase two housing amendments, which provide more flexible development standards for deed restricted, affordable and workforce housing in town centers and areas zoned for multifamily. It also includes removal of the minimum parcel size requirement for ADUs, which we just talked about. And a modification of lot width and setback requirements, among other changes, which we're going to hear about here. Information on this item can be found on page 71 of your packets. And I think I'm coming back to Michelle to introduce this item.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Uh, my name is Michelle Brown for the record. I'm a long-range planner with TRPA. And I'm joined here today by Kat Oakley from Washoe County. Um, Kat is here to present and per- the proposed amendments to the Washoe County Tahoe area plan. Um, but before Kat begins, I'd like to provide a brief introduction. Next slide, please. Um, the Washoe County Tahoe area plan encompasses the entirety of Washoe County's jurisdiction in the Tahoe Basin and uh, was approved by the governing board in 2021. Excuse me. Area plans were first introduced as part of the 2012 regional plan update and are very, and are a very component of the regional plan implementation. Uh, their uh, ability is to bring the regional plan concepts and strategies down to a local level. And they allow adaption of regulations to fit the local context. Next slide, please. The proposed amendments bring the Washoe Tahoe area plan into conformance with pre- previously adopted regional plan amendments, such as the implementation of affordable and workforce housing by incorporating the Tahoe area, the Tahoe Regional Plan Agency Phase Two Housing Amendments. Some proposed changes, for instance, the removal of the one acre minimum parcel size to construct an ADU would further the goals and policies of the regional plan. Other proposed changes are unique to the area plan itself with the redevelopment of town centers by decreasing minimum densities and a variety of technical cleanups. Next slide, please. And with that, I will hand it over to Kat Oakley with Washoe County.
Hi, I'm Kat Oakley, a senior planner with Washoe County. It's good to be here and I'm going to be presenting on the 2025 Washoe County Tahoe area plan update. Next slide, please. So as Michelle mentioned, the Tahoe area plan was adopted in 2021 after an extensive public outreach process at that time. It covers all of Washoe County within the Tahoe Basin and uh, includes the communities of Incline Village and Crystal Bay. It also, so it has that master plan level document and also has an implementing regula- regulation, which is articles two twenty and two twenty point one of our development code, which are, is essentially the zoning code for Washoe Tahoe. Next slide, please. The focus of this update is first conformance with TRPA's phase two housing amendments, which were adopted in 2023. Secondly, some other code changes to support housing affordability. And then lastly, some code refinements we want to make uh, and take advantage of the opportunity to make while we're going through this regional process. Next slide. So I'm just going to go through a, a broad overview of the changes that are proposed. First, we have some what we call scheduled amendments, which are items that were identified during the adoption of the Tahoe area plan in 2021 as changes that needed to be made in the future. And essentially they're items that were meant to be carried over from the, the community plans that preceded the area plan, but were not. And so we're resolving that and it's some uh, essentially some references and code provisions related to things like transferred development rights and the uh, Ponderosa Ranch area that we're, we're carrying over in this set of updates. Next slide. Secondly, uh, is the TRPA phase two housing amendments, the little graphic showing what they are is on the slide, but essentially we are proposing to fully opt-in to the phase two housing uh, amendments that TRPA adopted. So we're proposing to adopt all the incentives for multifamily, uh, for deed restricted housing in town centers and in multifamily areas as they relate to parking, coverage, height and density. Um, so opting in, next slide. And then we also are proposing some other changes to support housing. And these are um, first, allowing 100% deed restricted multifamily housing in the Ponderosa Ranch regulatory zone. You can see it highlighted in blue on, blue on the map on the screen and see that it's on the southeast side of Incline Village. This is an area where currently multifamily is not allowed, except for in the special area. And we're proposing to only allow multi- multifamily there if it is 100% deed restricted. And so we want to take advantage of potential workforce housing opportunities in that area, um, due to the demand for it and also proximity to places of employment like the Hyatt. Secondly, we're proposing to allow multifamily housing through the administrative review process or by right in preferred affordable areas. And so the administrative review process Eric touched on earlier, but it's essentially an in-house discretionary process. There's a public notice component, but it does not go to a board. And so it's a, a lower barrier to the development of housing in the areas where we want to see it, which is these preferred affordable areas. And then lastly, aligning residential and commercial setbacks in mixed-use development and reducing the minimum lot width to 40 feet it for residential mixed-use development. And so what that is getting at is in our town centers and areas where mixed-use development is allowed. Right now, our code has different setbacks for residential and commercial development, and that would be difficult to deal with, uh, actually developing a mixed-use development in a single building. And so we're proposing to just uh, align those and, and try to lower that barrier again to the type of development that we, and redevelopment that we'd like to see where we'd like to see it. Next slide, please. Next, you've already heard a bit about this, but we are proposing to um, remove our current minimum lot size for ADUs in the basin, which is one acre. Uh, this has already been touched on, but we think ADUs have some advantages when it comes to the workforce housing conversation. They're compatible with single-family development. It can provide flexibility for multi-generational living, opportunities for people to downsize and so forth. And so we are proposing to remove that one acre minimum lot size, uh, and then allowing ADUs up to 1,200 square feet in size on parcels that are smaller than an acre. The other change we're proposing is to allow detached ADUs that are under 500 square feet and under 12 feet tall to be five feet from side and rear property lines. So essentially having relaxed setbacks for the smaller units. And I do just want to mention that is consistent with our regulations for smaller accessory structures and also for uh, ADUs that fit these parameters in the rest of the county as well. It is worth mentioning that Washoe County does prohibit short-term rentals in accessory dwelling units in our code. And also that, um, I believe in contrast to California jurisdictions, only one ADU is allowed per parcel. Next slide, please. As I mentioned as well, um, since we are going through this regional review process, we want to make some cleanups essentially in our code that we've discovered over the last few years implementing it. Uh, that includes clarifying the um, acronyms and our, and organization of our use tables. Clarifying that development code amendment applications are also master plan amendments because they have to go through this regional review process and conformance process. Um, a, a change to allow schools, kindergarten through secondary in Incline Village tourist, um, which was previously, previously allowed and then inadvertently removed. So bringing that back to how it should be. And then updates in the master plan and development code portion of the Tahoe area plan to name states and references to reflect the current uh, reality of that and, and what's changed since we originally adopted it. Next slide, please. We also are wanting to make some changes that we think are improvements to our code. I think mostly um, relevant to kind of what we're thinking about on the local level, but to go over them. Removing a requirement for a special use permit for a single-family home or for all development in three of our regulatory zones that are actually primarily developed with single-family homes. Um, that requirement exists now because there's potential avalanche risk in those areas. We're proposing to address that, that risk through a whole harmless agreement rather than the special use permit requirement because what it essentially did was create a whole bunch of legally non-conforming, single-family homes in an area that is built out as a single-family neighborhood. And so making that process a little bit easier for everybody. We want to decrease the minimum density in town centers from 15 to 10. Right now, we have a minimum density of 15 and units per acre in our town centers. And the intent of a, a measure like that is generally to to try to prevent underdevelopment of those core areas that you want to see serve as town centers. Uh, this is a Washoe County measure that, that we adopted in our area plan. Um, doesn't come from TRPA, but we have seen over the last few years that that can be an impediment to, to redevelopment into more incremental redevelopment that we want to see. And so what we're proposing is removing or not removing, uh, reducing it to 10 and then also allowing 100% deed restricted development to go under that minimum density. So we want to make sure it's not a, a barrier particularly for deed restricted development. Uh, next, we want to align the process for front yard setback encroachment on sloped and corner lots between uh, accessory structures and primary structures. Right now, we allow front, front yard setback encroachment under certain conditions when a lot is very steep. But we have a different process, whether it's an atta- and a primary structure or a detached accessory structure. And what that means essentially, what we see is that whether or not a garage is attached or detached means it has to go through a different process, even though the impact is really not different. And so we want to align that process. Um, we also want to allow Washoe County to recognize TRPA approved temporary uses. Right now, our temporary use codes are different and that has that conflict has caused some uh, difficulties with our business license program and things like that. So allowing us to recognize those uses will resolve that. And then lastly, adding requirements, more robust requirements for long and short-term bike perking within and outside of town centers. Next slide, please. There is one map change proposed and it's on the screen there. And what it is, is there's a split zoned property in the Incline Village One Regulatory Zone, uh, which is kind of up in the hills in incline. And it's split between that, that zone and the Mount Rose Regulatory Zone, which is a conservation uh, zone. And it's a 5.75 acre parcel. The land use classification is 1A. And I mentioned that just because uh, there is currently on that property, a single-family home developed on the conservation zoning part that was developed as a summer home uh, many years ago. Now that land use in the basin has changed, summer homes are really not only used a certain part of the year anymore. It's used year round. And so it's basically a legally non-conforming home. And so uh, the proposal is to change the zoning of that property to be entirely Incline Village One to resolve uh, kind of that non-conformity issue. And then uh, since it is land use one A, the coverage is still quite, it's very limited on that property. So not a big impact to, to development potential there for that single-family parcel. Next slide. And then one other change. So the Crystal Bay condominiums, special. And then one other change. So the Crystal Bay condominiums, special area, that is where the old Orbit Gas Station is for reference, for those who know it. Uh there's a proposed increase in residential density for multiple family housing from four to six in that area. And you can see it outlined on the screen, a relatively geographically small area. Next slide. So we did complete an IEC, which you all have, and it was determined that a finding of no significant effect was appropriate and that all required findings could be made. Uh next slide. And then I do just want to take a moment to talk about a public outreach process. Uh we did start this update about a year ago. And we had two rounds of public outreach, a kind of kickoff round to introduce the amendments to everyone. Here's some initial feedback and then a draft review round, which is what it sounds like. Um the graphic on the right hand part of the slide just shows some numbers to capture the sort of participation we saw. We got many comments. We had many meeting participants and a lot of survey responses as well that were very helpful. And the majority of policy-related comments were in oppositions to the TRPA Phase Two Housing Amendments. Uh the concerns specifically, and you've already heard some of them today, were about impacts to community character, uh infrastructure and evacuation, and then also concerns pretty specifically about that achievable housing category, the fact that it doesn't have an income restriction and about deed restriction enforcement. Next slide, please. Uh this graphic shows just uh responses from our survey, some of the topics of concern that people had. And the top topics we heard about uh were fire and evacuation, parking and traffic and the environment. Uh but there also were comments throughout the process in support of workforce housing, which is of course what a lot of our amendments are focused on. Next slide. And so I do just want to touch a bit on what we did to respond to public input. Uh we did explore an alternative to the Phase Two Housing Amendments. And ultimately, it was determined that the alternative we proposed didn't meet the technical requirements to opt out. And so that's why we're coming to you now with a proposal to opt in. Uh we also made sure to create clear standards for the review of parking modifications. Parking is a big concern in in Incline Village and Crystal Bay. And so we wanted to make sure there was a clear process for how parking is modified um and and how we review that. So we established that. And then we also did propose some code changes to support workforce housing. The last thing I just want to mention on this topic is um in response to, you know, concerns about development is that none of our changes are impacting the TRPA growth management system. So the need for development rights and coverage limitations and all that is still going to apply. Next slide. Um I'm happy to answer any questions you all will have, and I'll pass it back to Michelle to finish this out.
Thank you, Kat. Michelle Brown for the record. Um the what, just a, oh, let's go to the next slide, please. A few next steps would be um that these amendments are scheduled for the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five governing board hearing for consideration of approval. Um next slide, please. And before we go into any questions, I'd like to mention that as of five P M. Yesterday, we did receive twenty-five public comments on this item. And with that, I'd like to open it up to questions.
All right. Thank you, Kat and Michelle for the detailed presentation. Appreciate it. APC members, it's our turn again. So who would like to kick us off? Robert, I see you reaching.
I'm reaching. Uh I'm just a minor point, and I don't know if it'll actually apply to many parcels. I'm looking at page ninety-eight. It's on the um section, the yard and lot standards. It's talking about setbacks and stuff. There's a a point uh that adds adds the word mixed use to where it says commercial, and then it also says minimum parcel width shall be forty feet for residential mixed-use development in preferred affordable areas. Um so if it's forty feet, that category still has the ten-foot setbacks. So I wonder if there's a way to specify that for those type of um ones in preferred affordable areas, the setback can be reduced to the five feet that you might see for the small residential lots.
Cat, it'll play Washoe County planning. Um yeah, we did. So we did reduce the minimum lot width with to forty feet, and a lot of that has to do with flexibility sometimes. Uh and obviously, new lots cannot be created, but if people are moving lot lines around, uh there may be cases where maybe the lot is a weird shape. And because of that, our and how we measure law with, it's going to be a narrower width, but maybe wider in certain parts and and to allow for different configurations. And so we're trying to go uh kind of more permissive on the law with to allow for those situations. But in in terms of the setbacks, um yes, there might be cases where if it is just a rectangular forty forty-foot wide lot, then I understand the kind of question about, well, the ten-foot setback doesn't really make sense. But in in those situations, um we would we have um mechanisms to assess that on a case-by-case basis. And and really, we're just trying to lean on the permissive side. So that's kind of the reason for uh the forty number and the ten number uh that maybe don't make as much intuitive sense together.
Okay, just as long as you have, if there's some good projects coming, I don't kind of hard to see a lot of mixed use forty foot wide lots, but okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else have thoughts they'd like to share? Let me look online.
Brandon, I have a question. I actually intended to ask it in the last item, but it's just as appropriate here. Can to be clear, the deed restriction required here would be held would be held and managed and enforced by TRPA, not the county. Is that correct?
Uh Catholic and Washington County planning. So we do not require a deed restriction for accessory dwelling units. If somebody did get a deed restriction um in order to get the bonus unit, right? If it were achievable or moderate affordable, then yes, that deed restriction would be managed by TRPA.
Gotcha. Michelle, can you elaborate a little bit on just what is the process for monitoring and enforcement? And is it transparent publicly at all?
Yes, Michelle Brown for the record. Um the monitoring for our deed restriction program is an annual basis of uh looking at a couple sources of information, one being the um listing of properties that are for sale. And um looking at the deed restriction list of properties. And if a property is shown as for sale, we check the price um and do the formula that would uh create a maximum sales price for that property. And we monitor any listings that are posted and um reflect that against the the terms written in the deed restriction itself. So oftentimes, there's a sale for sale formula, a rental formula that is um hinged off of the county's AMI, the average medium income that's set by HUD. So uh excuse me, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And um so if we do see any discrepancy in that price, we make a phone call and have a conversation of explaining how this works with that property of having a deed restriction tied to it. More times than not, we get compliance that's relisted with the correct uh sale price. And that is one form of our monitoring. Uh the other deed restricted properties that are under the achievable category, they have written in their deed restriction, a um annual monitoring form that they are required to submit for compliance. And that shows um basically their um ability of demonstrating that they are using the property as it's written in the deed restriction. And there's just a handful of questions in that online form that they submit to us on an annual basis. As far as any um enforcement that is needed, um we we've very can't think of one um instance since I've been here. And we've been doing this program for three years of monitoring and enforcement. We haven't reached a a situation of enforcement yet. So we've got a good um inventory of properties that are deed restricted that comply. And this information is uh readily available on our website. Under the housing page, there's the annual report um that we put out, and it's um available now for two thousand and twenty-four. Or excuse me, yeah.
This Graham St. Michelle, just to add to that, we, you know, all of what Michelle says correct is really what is included in the deed restriction too, in terms of some, we we want to, I think, see a reporting requirement in the deed restriction itself. So we can, we can require that. We do um when, if we find a violation, we have our traditional enforcement authorities to kick in under the compact. And I'd say the other, the other thing maybe left out is we can also rely, as we do with any violations on citizen complaints. So if somebody is a resident nearby and sees that there's there, you know, this, it looks like it's being a short-term rental or something like that. We can get that and then go take a look.
Thank you. Eric?
No, thank you. Um I appreciate everything Michelle just said. It's all very useful to know that that's how it works right now. Um I'd like to throw out, Brendan, you may know this too, as Chair, that the Tahoe Living Working Group hears about um this issue regularly when we have public meetings and and public input about how do deed restrictions get monitored and whether that's really useful and 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 whether it's working for the community or not. And uh Karen and other staff uh take that seriously. And I think that we would expect over time for that to perhaps evolve along with some of the other housing issues uh that Tahoe Living Working Group um has taken in a lot of good community input and is considering some some ways to move forward, not just in the near future, but perhaps the far future that could impact the way monitoring is done. Housing authorities and other opportunities that can be explored. Um and I I I know from that input and from input here and and from input in Washoe County from our citizens, that there is some lack of trust in it, lack of faith in it, um that that there's some wish that it could be more robust or better. And 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 I'm not going to disagree with any of that, but I'd like to take us back for just a moment to when we first had to start talking about affordable housing and what were we going to do about it? And who was going to monitor? Because remember, that was a huge issue for us before TRPA stepped in. And staff said, okay, I guess it's going to have to be us. It's kind of how it worked. And they put something together, and they're doing it to the best of their ability right now. So we can disagree with it, and a lot of the criticism is accurate. But the other side of that coin is thank you for being the ones to step up and do something, because without that, we would have nothing. And at least we have something to build on and to evolve. So um there are both sides of that coin, right? And I just want to make sure that despite sometimes the very accurate criticism that will help us propel propel forward and will help us get better, the other side of that coin is thank you for doing what you're doing. So that's that's my input on that.
Always nice to get a thank you. Doesn't happen that often in this line of work, but who else would like to make a comment here on APC?
I have a comment.
Hillary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciated the thorough explanation of of all the different updates that you're making. And I did note, um I get, I have an ear for some amendments that have to do with relaxing setbacks. And the reason why is um I'm the representative for the Nevada Department of Conservation Natural Resources and work for the Division of State Lands. And we hold um upwards of five hundred urban lots in the Tahoe Basin on the Nevada side. And sometimes our lots experience encroachment and trespass issues from neighboring parcels. So when setbacks are relaxed, that does have a tendency to increase the probability of those encroachments happening. So I wanted to ask what Washoe County may have in its capacity to help ensure that those encro- encroachment and trespass situations don't occur.
Yeah, Catholic Washoe County planning. So yes, a lot of the, I think a lot of the setback relaxation in this particular package is focused more on the town centers in those areas. But there are some cases, for example, with the ADUs particularly where um they could be used in our uh more single-family residential neighborhoods where those inholding type lots are. For, you know, anybody who wanted to to build an ADU under those setbacks or build anything uh under our required setbacks would need to go through our permitting process where we review that, where we inspect that, um where they need to ensure and demonstrate to us that it is actually on their property. And so I think, you know, there are a lot of cases where we do have older structures that were not necessarily permitted under that process that uh don't play as nice with property lines or the setbacks. And in those cases, um we if if somebody wants to, for example, expand a building that encroaches into a setback um to create an attached ADU, just as an example, we would you not allow them to do a significant expansion without bringing the structure overall into conformance. And so that's kind of one of the mechanisms we could use to resolve existing issues. But in terms of like created issues from these provisions because of our existing permitting processes, uh we're going to ensure through that process that they, the building is where they say that it is.
All right. I appreciate that a lot. I think I would offer perhaps um just ensuring there's some rigor in the review of the surveyed lot lines. I think the surveys um are really important just to make sure that those are accurate and true. Um and then also having oversight during the construction as well, ensuring that the construction, equipment, vehicles, um grading, uh soil removal, those sorts of things um are not happening on the neighboring lot. Um so I would, I would hope that Washoe County is prepared to to assist and support those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to hear those comments, Hillary. Um if those things are happening to your parcels in Washoe County, if if somebody is driving their construction equipment next door when they're trying to do something on their own property and they're getting on your property, that's inexcusable. We don't want that to happen. And if that does happen and you're aware of it before we're aware of it, we just need to hear from you and it'll stop. If if these kinds of things are are an ongoing problem or chronic issue with you in Washoe County, we can work together to make that stop. If it's an occasional from time to time issue, we can also work with you to make that stop. Um well, the these are, that's we don't want that happening any more than you do. So if you're experiencing that, reach out to us and we'll figure out how to how to do better.
Yes, I appreciate that. We do work very closely with Washoe County when it does happen. Um we've had recently just landscaping and illegal tree cutting happening um in that part of the basin. Um we do work very closely. We appreciate our partnership and our coordination. I think my point is prevention is the best medicine. And so where it's possible to help protect a neighboring lot, that's really where my interest is. Thank you.
Thanks, Hillary. Other thoughts? Let me look. Don't see any hands online. I'll just say, you know, kudos to Washoe County. It's no small feat to do an area plan amendment. Yeah, we're going through one right now. And thanks to TRPA staff for helping. Um it takes, it takes a village to get these done. So um kudos there. Also, you know, on the Phase Two Housing Amendments, I know that can be, you know, that's a TRPA uh imposed mandate. Um I know you've had some concern in your community on that, and we understand that. Um we've all, all the local jurisdiction reps have had to, you know, address this issue in one fashion or another. And we've all had our challenges with that. We're still continuing to address our compliance with those initiatives through our area plan amendment process, which is, which ours is pretty lengthy because we're really expanding the boundary of ours. And I'll be talking to you in that seat, uh all looking for a recommendation in probably a couple of years. So I look forward to that. But I just wanted to say, you know, this, this is a challenging process. It's, it's time-consuming. Uh I commend you for engaging with public. Thanks for showing all those stats, Kat, on the survey responses, et cetera, and for taking that feedback into account. There are some things that local jurisdictions can't control here in the Tahoe Basin. So um I just want to highlight that. So I don't see any other hands. I think we're going to go to public comment on this item, and we'll do it. Sorry, Graham, did you want?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, may I just jump in one thing before we do public comment and apologize? But I'd like to just make sure we have a really clean record. Maybe preempting Mr. Shishara again on this, but um our, the IEC- Maybe preempting Mr. Shishara again on this, but our, the I E C on this one also has a typo with a- again, it goes to the the check boxes. They need to be checked, no. And there's a two that are checked, yes, under 3.19 scenic resources. If you read the discussion, you can, you can conclude all the analysis is there, they should be no. For some reason, we just, that that slipped through and just want to make sure that we correct that and put that on the record. Thank you.
What page is that on, Graham?
That is page 235 of the packet. And it's under the discussion of a couple scenic resource analysis pieces.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, where was I? Okay. Public comment. We'll do it just like last time. Let me read my quick statement. So for members of the public that would like to address the APC on item four B. Now's your opportunity. We'll go to members in the room first. Please come to the podium, state your name and turn the microphone on. For those members of the public joining us on Zoom, please either click the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen now or dial star nine on your telephone. You'll be called upon and unmuted by a TRPA staff member at the appropriate time. So Mr. Flaherty will come to you.
Thank you, Chair Doug Flaherty at TahoeCleanAir.org and also made comments, written comments via TahoeCleanAir.org and as a private citizen. I'd like to quickly recap our list of what we're saying and considering new significant information of substantial importance and new substantial evidence. It's in our packets. First up is the 2024 Lake Tahoe Basin Independent Wildfire Evacuation Analysis, which was created by Ladder AI coupled with two stellar qualified subject matter experts, including one, a pyro analysis consultant, John Messina, former Cal Fire Chief of the Butte Unit, serving as the Fire Chief of Butte County, including the Town of Paradise. At the time of the deadly campfire, Chief Messina served as the initial incident commander. During the campfire, he also plays himself on the Apple series or movie, The Lost Bus. In a frontline article following the campfire, Fire Division Chief, Cal Fire Division Chief John Messina, the campfire incident commander describes his leadership during a no notice fire that overwhelmed resources. He uses the term no notice. The second, a second consultant in this is well qualified with Shane Lauderdale, former Fire Chief of the Chico Fire Department, who served as the Operations Chief and Branch Director as part of the Cal Fire Incident Management Team Four during the campfire transitioning into unified command. Next up for substantial evidence, the October 2023 letter from retired Fire Department professional professionals highlighting urgent concerns about wildfire related town center choke points. The letter is signed by seven well qualified fire professionals. Next up is the 275 pages of petitions I turned over from Incline Village Crystal Bay citizens expressing concern and opposition to the amendments until a fire evacuation analysis is done. And lastly, the 2024 County Ladder's Contra- Contraflow AI conversion study, which once extrapolate extrapolated indicates significant times from Incline Village West on Highway 28 into Kings Beach cross jurisdictionally. You guys are telling these local agencies to analyze fire evacuation themselves. They don't have the responsibility to do that. Hopefully we'll find out what she knew, when you knew it about that contraflow study that was shielded from the public. Looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Yeah, hi again, Ann Nichols, 55 year resident real estate broker. You've heard that before. I'm asking you to deny or defer Washoe County's incorporation of TRPA's Phase Two housing amendments until the 2024 Placer County Ladder's AI Contraflow Conversion Study is fully acknowledged, analyzed and publicly vetted in this basin. This study was commissioned by the Placer County Office of Emergency Services using real time AI to model evacuation scenarios across jurisdictional lines, including the exact corridor that Washoe and Placer residents must share in a wheel, in a wildfire, Highway 28 through Kings Beach. Yet this critical information was withheld from public view for over a year. It was not included in the Placer's Tahoe Basin Area Plan Addendum, not shared with Howgie Bruick, and not provided to the public or commissioners before the September 2025 Placer County hearing. Why does that matter? Because the results directly affect Washoe Tahoe residents' safety. The ladder study shows shocking increases in evacuation times compared with Placer's own adopted 2016 E I R E I S. For Kings Beach, Carnelian Bay Heights, Highway 267 area, 35,000 vehicles. With contrafo- contraflow evacuation now takes five hours and eight minutes, a 38.7% increase over Placer's 3.7 hour baseline. Under other model conditions, evacuation balloons to eight hours, 20 minutes, 125% increase. These aren't hypothetical numbers. They're real time AI projections for the exact roads our residents and visitors must use to escape a fire storm. TRPA cannot claim to protect environmental thresholds or community safety while simultaneously advancing amendments that increase population density and traffic in a known evacuation bottleneck. Phase two allows 65 foot height, limited density, 100% coverage and no minimum parking, all under the misleading banner of deed restricted housing with no enforceable income gaps and no cumulative evacu- evacuation analysis. If this body is serious about pub- public safety, environmental integrity and legal defensibility, you must pause. Demand that both Placer and Washoe evacuation modeling, including the withheld Ladder's AI data be integrated into a basin wide cumulative environmental impact statement before any further two, phase two adoptions occur. Otherwise, you are voting blindfolded and placing lives at risk on both sides of the state line. Please do not approve the incorporation of phase two until the Ladder's AI Contraflow Study is fully released, peer reviewed and publicly evaluated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Hello, my name is John Appolito. Item one that just got approved. It, it said no significant effect. My question is, no significant effect on what? I hope that wasn't ADUs will have no significant effect on what's happening in in our area. Now, or or is that more middle school logic? So maybe I missed something there. I would like to hear the rest of that sentence. No significant effect on what? By the way, that middle school, that was my favorite. Those kids can't help it. Their hormones and sugar. I really enjoyed them. But you couldn't get this kind of logic through high school or elementary school. The Washoe County School or Washoe County just said two things. No short term rentals and ADUs. I heard that. Is that correct, Kat? And I also heard no deed restrictions. Now, is that also an ADU, a property with an ADU? Or is the no deed restrictions related to something else? That's my question. And I know you might not be able to answer it right now, maybe when I'm done. Hopefully that's not more of that middle school logic. As a real estate broker, what I dealt with for years with the TRPA was clients just had trouble adding a deck or adding an addition on their house. Now what I see with the moderate income, you know, all the deed restricted housing that we have on the North Shore, no one's been enforcing it for years. So it's put buyers, and I just had a owner. I last, well, I don't know, probably six, eight months ago, I went to her house. She has a deed restricted property. The last broker told her, ah, don't worry about it. It's never going to be enforced. I went in and I told her, while TRPA is starting to enforce it, you put people in a really bad way because of lack of enforcement. So there's no way in hell anyone is going to be able to enforce 25% achievable housing for what do you call those ADUs, 25% moderate income housing for ADUs, 50% affordable income housing for ADUs. No one's going to be able to enforce that. Don't pretend like you can. At least the guy here from Washoe County said, he had kind of admitted it in a roundabout way. So I can't even believe you say that. I would really like to thank the TahoeCleanAir.org for their lawsuit. Unfortunately, people in the community and entities have to sue the TRPA to get back to their original mission of keeping the lake clear, clean, not working for the developers, not not being able to get us out when there's the next fire, which is, I think, should be part of the equation. And unfortunately, there's all these reasons you guys keep coming up with to keep ignoring that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Hello, Diane Becker, full time resident Incline Village. I came today to speak to you from my heart about the fear within our community about fire evacuation and the need to do fire evacuation analysis before anyone adopts for Washoe County, Incline Village, Crystal Bay, these, these phase two amendments. Throughout history, we've witnessed catastrophic events, events that shook entire communities, disrupted lives and killed many, many people. If you look in Doug Flaherty's information that he gave you at pages 20 to 23, he lists 25 fires that killed people, destroyed hundreds, or actually in some cases, thousands of homes. And we're asking only that you wait, only that you actually see if we can be evacuated. Now throughout history, we see like, if we look at James, William Mulholland, who said right before the St. Francis Dam collapsed, oh, there's no way that dam's ever going to collapse. We're not going to do any of this suggested, but what the public's asking about making sure that we do a little bit of work on it. And it collapsed and it killed over 500 people. And at the end of that, what did he feel? He felt shame. He said, it's my fault. I should have known anyone went into seclusion. And then LA, LA City says, we will never let that happen again. And all that we're asking is that this, this government action of saying, we're so ashamed, we should have known that, we should have done something, doesn't happen to us. And I listen to the TARP governing board and I hear people actually calling us NIMBYs. I retired to Lake Tahoe. I live here full time. I used to actually be a developer and a lawyer for very large companies. I'm not here because I oppose, because I'm a NIMBY. I'm here because I am afraid of what's going to happen in fire evacuation. And I wanted to say that to you, we are not NIMBYs. We are just people who don't want to be caught in a situation where we can't be evacuated. And we're asking you to have some courage and say to the governing board, you know, maybe we need to do a real fire evacuation analysis because what's happened? Some reason you did a no, a, a, a noticed fire evacuation. What does that mean? And why would anyone do a noticed fire evacuation? We are afraid of a fire that's like the one in, that one in Palisades, the one that either would be in Paradise, the one that just happened in Pacific Palisades, where they have 35 mile an hour winds and it's out of control if it's not controlled in 10 minutes. We're asking that you do a fire evacuation and then you go to, maybe you just develop new rules. Maybe you go to the developers and require them to do more things. There are creative things that can be done. But nobody's doing them. You're just trying to move fast. And you say it's for workforce housing. Balance public safety and workforce housing. I am in favor of workforce housing. But you don't balance against public safety. And I hope you'll really consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Any other comments in the room? Seeing none. Catherine, we will go to you for online comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Four hands raised online. The first hand up was John Felice. John, please unmute to make your comment. John Felice, if you're online, please unmute to make your comment. Okay, moving on, Jaden Woolser. Jaden, please unmute to make your comment.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Jaden Woolser. I'm an Assistant Planner Two with X-Lining Company. And today I'm speaking in support of the Washoe County Area Plan Amendments. The proposed amendments will bring the Washoe County Area Plan into greater conformance with the TRPA Code of Ordinances, as well as provide residents in the area the opportunity for affordable housing. The amendments encompass many items that will benefit the community, including the incorporation of the Phase Two housing amendments, correcting the noncompliance zoning and removal for required parcel size for ADUs, among other items. The community will benefit greatly from the area plan amendments and the area plan, if amended, will better adhere to TRPA goals and policies. I appreciate you guys seeing all of these amendments today and hearing what everyone has to say. And I trust that you will make the correct decision in approving these amendments today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jaden.
Next hand up is Alan Miller. Alan, please unmute to make your comments.
Hi. Civil and environmental engineer, South Lake Tahoe. I speak today in support of my written comments, augmenting them. The gist of those comments was that TRPA does nearly everything through practices not compliant with law, with not compliant with the compact or the code. It's government of the corporations, by the corporation, for the corporations. And you're just playing a part into it. And the consequences of that are written large in the water quality report that I provided in TRPA's failure for 55 years to provide any improvement in its most important threshold, water quality. Now, your counsel tried to say that my comments concerning improper and deficient public notice for this meeting was provided. And I don't believe that because of your code section 13.6.4, which basically says public comment is going to be limited to the seven days that this document supporting your proposal today was provided to the public, not 20 days as required by the compact and code, or 60 for an E I S. And you're going to limit that comment. So the board is just going to have a public hearing, but they're not going to accept anything new from the public at that point. It has to be everything that was accumulated to today. So that's, that's where I'm at on that. And your findings fail to include cumulative effects and findings in code section 4.4.2 as required for all projects. So your motions are always a lie that way, just like the last motion was a lie. Because it's selective code enforcement or implementation, you, you simply pick and choose which parts of your code you're going to implement. And that's pretty important because that deals with the cumulative effects and some of the information that I provided in my water quality report. Further, my comments commented substantially on the MOUs and the double standards that TRPA applies through the region. And there's no MOU in Washoe Tahoe. Everything's currently inactive. There's no information on it. And these MOUs are just horrible. They contribute to the environmental effects and the ongoing degradation. It's just local governments pretending to be TRPA. And with no, no MOU for any local government in Nevada, what is the basis and what is going on with that? Yeah, there's never a significant effect for TRPA, but this, it's all written in Lake Tahoe.
The next hand raised is Pamela Sigdenas. Pamela, please unmute to make your comment.
Yes, I'm Pamela Sigdenas, a full time Washoe Tahoe resident. Your vote today will be one of the most consequential in Tahoe's history. I'm here to ask you to oppose the amendments to the Washoe Tahoe area plan. Development code changes this far reaching and grave should be backed with significant environmental research, comprehensive traffic analysis. comprehensive traffic analysis, visitation data, and evacuation impacts. The public has not seen any of this consequential information. And much of it has, as apparently referenced earlier in public comments, has either been shielded or withheld from the public. I attended many of the workshops leading up to this day. I can tell you, the level of detail you're seeing today far exceeds what we saw during the workshop process. That is really unfair to the public. From the beginning of this rezoning process, the Washoe Tahoe residents have consistently voiced serious concerns about the clear and present danger extensive development in the geographically constrained Washoe Tahoe area will pose to residents, visitors, and workers, not to mention the lake itself. These amendments are a naked attempt to serve growth at all costs developer agendas. They will also endanger the public, residents, workers, and visitors. We are concerned and encourage you to please put public safety and Tahoe's environmental health first. You have the influence and expertise to require comprehensive evacuation modeling that includes many of the thousands of visitors to Tahoe's East Shore and Sand Harbor, something that has never been done, and ensure that Washoe Tahoe's infrastructure and our first responder staff can safely ensure evacuation of today's residents and visitor population, not to mention the thousands more that you are asking be now densely added to our already constrained environment. Require a comprehensive environmental impact study that analyzes the risks and harms to Lake Tahoe. Approving these amendments today without the necessary knowledge of their impact will jeopardize the safety of every person who lives, works, or visits Tahoe. Be an advocate for public safety. Don't rubber stamp poor policy. Oppose the proposed changes. As one of my fellow Tahoe residents wrote, "History has shown us time and again that when officials ignore risks, danger follows, and so does regret. We cannot afford to wait until after a tragedy to act. Please, please, please act responsibly. Thank you."
Thank you, Pamela.
Next hand raised is Nick Xline. Nick, please unmute to make your comment.
Good morning, APC members. Nick Xline, on behalf of Xline and Company. Really look forward to speaking today and to the APC about this item. I think this is an incredibly important item to be bringing forward. I, over the past, you know, several years, have been in untold working groups, conversations with different stakeholders and so forth in regard how to bring achievable, affordable housing to Tahoe. And really, it's an all hands on deck moment. We need to work collectively to bring housing and these amendments are a good step forward in that direction. And so wanted to just call in today and voice support. Want also to provide a little context in terms of emergency services, as that's been a comment that has been provided kind of throughout this process. You know, I, I tend to look at it slightly differently. If we don't have a housing achievable to most people, where are the firefighters going to live? Where are the people that have get it that are going to ensure Incline Village's water is flowing freely in the event of a fire? Where are police officers going to live? Where are school teachers going to live? Without providing these housing options, you're going to see a breakdown of community. And so these are critical to ensure that our community infrastructure and emergency evacuation is workable into the future. This also works to clean up specific items that just needed addressing, including zoning and other items. And so wanted just again to call in today to voice my support. And thank you so much.
Thanks, Nick.
And one more time, we'll try John Felice. John, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself to make your comment.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry, I was having a problem with the microphone. Anyway, I applaud everybody here today, speaking on behalf of the fire evacuation and, and all the code enforcements, because that is very lacking. And until that's vetted, I don't think we really should move forward with any responsibility of moving forward in that respect. My main concern that I'm calling in today about, and that was brought up by some of your staff, and that is addressing the historic, hopefully addressing the historic preservation of one of the original Incline Village buildings, the Googie architecture, the Orbit Gas Station on Lake Shore and Highway 28. And I think we would have a missed opportunity here to preserve the history of Incline and a monumental building of that period of architecture. There are many, many fine examples of restored and adaptive reuse of the Googie architecture throughout the United States. One of which is just a day's ride away south to Palm Springs. It is an outstanding, award-winning Googie architecture, originally a gas orbit station that is now the visitor's center to Incline Village. And what a gateway that this building can be to our community. And I really do hope that, I know you're talking about adding multiple family housing on that lot, but if somehow that building can be preserved and, and saved for future generations, I think that'd be very important for our community as a whole. Thank you very much. And please, if you would consider this, and if I can see some more documents and some more dialogue of what has been done and how it's being addressed, that would be great in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chair, there are no more hands raised to comment.
Okay, I'll close public comment. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you all for your comments. We heard quite a lot about fire, safety, evacuation routes, planning, that this would cause, you know, this action today would be one of the most significant in TRPA's history about causing effects. We were, I guess, quote, going into this blindfolded. Can staff reassure us that we have all the information in front of our fingertips to make an informed decision on these matters in regards to fire and evacuation safety? Whoever thinks, Kat, do you want to try or?
Kat, Oakley, Washoe County, I'll, I'll give it a shot to start out. One key thing to keep in mind with these amendments that I have already mentioned is that the growth management system is not changing. And so a lot of the concern is about increased development. And that cap on units that can be built in the basin and in Incline Village, it remains unchanged. And so what, what the Phase Two Housing Amendments do is they potentially change the allowable, allowable form of that development to concentrate it more in the town center areas, in those multifamily areas. And so that can, you know, potentially afford some benefits in the sense that it's, it's not dispersed as a dispersed pattern of development where, you know, each car is then going through all these intersections and then going to the main routes and then going out, concentrating more of that development near the existing main routes out of town. You know, it potentially affords some benefits and just, again, it does not increase the development potential for, for Incline Village or Crystal Bay. So I do want to emphasize that.
I think that's really helpful. Thanks.
John Hester, for the record, I want to kind of address this from a regional perspective, maybe. And I know some of you may have attended the Governing Board Retreat where we laid out next year's work plan. And particularly in the transportation strategic priority. We pointed out that we have received the Protect Grant from the federal government, which is for, a part of that is for resilience, Transportation Resiliency Improvement Program. And what that will do is we've sent out proposals and we've received, sent out a request for proposals and received some. And we will have firms like the firms who help, give you an example of where they've really already done this is like on the East Coast where they plan for hurricanes and evacuation. How do you, you know, there's flood issues here, snow melt, snow, fire, landslides, all those, the full range of hazards of, of problems that you want to be a resilient transportation system for that. We're going to have them come look at everything that's been done here and look at where we have shortcomings or short falls in that analysis and do some additional analysis as well as identify projects to improve the resiliency of our transportation system. One thing I will point out, it's probably obvious, but a lot of people don't talk about it, is most of the people who evacuate are people who are here already. Unless it's a big visitor day, but if you take a place that gets a hurricane and we all hear about Florida or North Carolina or whatever, it's not so much because of new development. There's a small increment of new development that, that we will, of course, build into this analysis. But a lot of it is just trying to take care of the situation where people live in areas that have limited numbers of ingress and egress, and they are subject to natural hazards. And we're not the only place in the country that has that. We just had some staff come back from the Mountain Planners Conference and they looked at, they were, they talked about four areas. We were one of them. We fortunately have multiple ingress and egress routes into this basin. A lot of them had one way in or out, one, one highway. So, so you had two ways in and out, but we're going to look at all that. And so what information we don't have, you have all the information we do have. What information you don't have, we will be bringing forward as part of that update to our transportation planning. I will also point out that at the Governing Board, we had the first responders from both states, local entities in both states, as well as state level OEM, Office of Emergency Management, Division of Emergency Management. I don't remember which name goes with which state, but they were here and they talked about what's going on and they were, gave our board a very good picture of what they think they have under control and what they don't, what they would like us to work on. And what they would like us to work on is things like looking at the evacuation routes. Have we done the best forest thinning we should do on those? Those are the kinds of things. Maybe the, I'm sorry that the woman who spoke about, could we make developers do things? I'm sorry she isn't here still, but we have talked about, and I know we talked about that here, is could we make a mitigation measure be a second ingress or egress to a subdivision? Because we don't do new subdivisions, but we could put in some of those kinds of things like you have in new subdivisions going in in other areas. So we're going to look at all of that. And I would invite anybody who's interested in participating in that to send an email to Rebecca Kramine on our staff. Her email is rkramine@trpa.gov. And you can look on our webpage to get the exact spelling if you need it. But we're very interested in addressing the issue. Board wants us to address the issue. And we want people to participate if they'd like to. So I just wanted to give that perspective on that particular issue. Although it's the Washoe Tahoe Area Plan, I just thought the regional perspective would be good.
It's very helpful to hear. Thank you, John and Kat. Real quick, Eric, I just, I just wanted to say, you know, me personally, no matter where you live, there's risk. Hurricanes, floods, fires, there's, there is risk if you want to live in the Tahoe Basin of wildfire, and we all have to accept that. I, you know, many of us live in this basin. Some of us have been born and raised in this basin. We're raising our families here. I just want to say, you know, we're, we take that issue very seriously. I, I don't think any of us particularly appreciate being called, I don't know what we've been called, but just that we're not going into this eyes wide open or that we don't care about this issue. So with that, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick mention on as what Washoe County might have thought as we were putting this together in terms of expectations. And I think it's really important, whether it's just Washoe County or any of the other jurisdictions, about what we really expect to get out of these amendments. And it kind of goes back to using data and numbers to help us check our assumptions. So if Washoe County were to get a couple of dozen, two dozen ADUs in the next 10 years, that we couldn't have got, let's say three dozen, let's throw it up to 36 ADUs that we couldn't have gotten before, that we got because of these amendments that allowed smaller lot size. That's a, that's a, that's not ADUs expanding and taking up all of Incline and Crystal Bay. That's a handful. That's a few ADUs. But it's 36 of these so-called teachers and firemen. It's 36 people who serve you when you come there and you get something good to eat, who don't have to drive up from Dayton anymore. And that's, in our minds, a huge win. If we get a couple of dozen ADUs that we wouldn't have got before, that's a huge win. And we're not sure we'll get that. In regard to the multifamily in town centers and in multifamily areas, that gets a little bit more height and a little bit more density. Well, let's put some expectations around what we might think to get out of those changes. In all of those areas, somebody could come in tomorrow with a building permit and get what's, and what's likely to be condos instead of apartments. That can happen tomorrow. And those are the types of development that are still likely to happen on any of those available parcels, those available areas throughout Incline and Crystal Bay. What's available for redevelopment or new development is still likely to be what could happen today, prior to these amendments. Even with these amendments, it's really hard to put together a project and get it all to come together. And so our expectation is if we could get one or two areas that would otherwise just be condos, to be apartments instead and rented to people that are going to be living there, even, or working in the basin, and even if it's an engineer or a doctor or somebody who doesn't fill, fill the teacher requirement, we still see that as a big win. If we can just get a couple of them. Because let's remember, what's going to happen without that is still condos of significant density, because that's what we allow. Right? And what this amendment does for us is open an opportunity for just a couple of those spaces to serve a different demographic. That's what it does. It doesn't increase development. It doesn't cause huge new growth in Incline or Crystal Bay. In fact, it doesn't really cause any growth of consequence that we can determine. It shapes the growth. It gives opportunity to a different type of demographic. Right? Regardless of whether they're a doctor or a teacher, if they're living there, remember we talked about losing community? That's already happening. We're already losing that community. We're trying to rebuild community in many aspects, right? We've already heard from people in Incline that their community is being lost. This is an opportunity to rebuild that community with a few dozen ADUs. And maybe, if we get lucky, maybe a couple of developments that are apartments instead of condos. That's what this really does. And another thing about it is that as far as the Phase Two amendments go, we all understand here that if we don't do it today, Alyssa will be back in December and it will be done in 60 seconds. Because that's how it happened for some of you. So thank you for listening to me. I appreciate all the discussion.
Thank you, Eric. Hitch?
Since the question about growth management came up and Kat had a very good response, I was reading through the comments that we've received and one of the comments assertion is as bonus units multiply growth. It talks about how bonus units can be leveraged multiple times through transfer ratios. About my understanding is if you transfer a potential residency unit to a town center, depending where it comes from, that you can earn multiple bonus units. But those bonus units come out of pool, correct? And once they're used, they're gone. They're not leveraged, they're not leveraged again. Is that correct?
John Hester, for the record, that's correct. If we have so many bonus units in our pool and the local governments have some as well, when they're used, they're used. And you can no longer use, offer that incentive because they've been used up.
Thank you.
Thanks, John, for that clarification. Kate, I see your hand up. Thanks, John, for that clarification. Kate, I see your hand up. Let's go to you.
Thank you, Chair. Cap, first I want to say I appreciate and am very aware of all the work that goes into an area plan amendment. I have literally been in your shoes and brought forward area amendments. So I know the work and collaboration with the community that goes into it. And this is a tough one for me because in the first agenda item, I brought up setback requirements and so on and so forth. And I'm all for attainable housing and just like Eric, you mentioned, if you can help just a handful of people in the service industry or first responders or teachers. I mean, that, that, that means a lot. I think the struggle for me is just the allowing an ADU to be five feet from the property line like an accessory structure. You know, even if it's 15, 15 feet or less in height. I think my only concern there is an accessory structure versus an ADU is a living space, a lot more electronic equipment is being used, you know, kitchen and cooking and more accidents. I think that's my only hesitation here is I think I'm not really in agreement with that part of this whole amendment. I just think there is a, an ability to still keep building and separation because, you know, five feet to the property line makes it that much closer to the neighbor and the fence line. So that's my only hesitation with this is, is, and I know what goes into those analysis, but I do think there's a difference between the accessory structure and an ADU. So I just wanted to to be transparent that that is a hesitation on my part. Just in regards to the planning, but I completely appreciate your efforts and I totally understand it.
Thanks, Kate. Do you want to talk to that, Kat?
Yeah, Kat Oakley. Yeah, I appreciate those comments and I do just want to mention for context that that more relaxed setback allowance is something that we have already implemented in other parts of the county. And we haven't experienced, I think, any of the issues that you are concerned about. So I, yeah, I understand what you're saying. We, this is, this is not a new regulation for us, at least in Washoe County. It is in the basin, but you know, so far, so good, I guess.
Thank you. Final thoughts from anyone else here? Crystal?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and bringing forward the package and adding to it. I think the, I'm comfortable with the amendments. I think on the setback side, I mean, it's consistent with what California jurisdictions are doing. And in fact, I think it's a little more than what we're doing, but so I, yeah, I don't know that I have any concern with the setbacks and just really commend staff for bringing it forward. I think anything we can do to promote more workforce housing in the basin is a good thing. So I'm supportive of the amendments.
Thanks, Crystal. Okay, I think we're good. Could you put the two motions on the screen? There they are. Perfect. So again, we have two motions. They're very similar to the last item. Would anyone care to make the first motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Crystal.
Okay, so the first motion, a motion to recommend that the TRPA governing board approve the required findings as set forth in attachment A, including a finding of no significant effect for approval of the Washoe County Tahoe area plan amendments as described in the staff summary and shown in attachment B.
Graham, do you want to supplement anything there?
That's okay. I think we still have it on the record. It's just that it will fix that, but yeah.
Perfect. Thank you, Crystal. Anyone want to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Hitch. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Tracy, we're going to come to you for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Young? Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
Chief Drennan? Can circle back. Mr. Tishera?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Mr. Drake? Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Marilis O'Neil?
This pains me to say no, but literally it is only regarding the setbacks. I just, that's the only caveat for me that I have a problem with ADUs at five feet.
Thank you. Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Chief Drennan?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, anyone care to make the second motion?
I'll make the second motion.
Thanks, Crystal.
I will make a motion to recommend that the TRPA governing board adopt ordinance 2025 blank shown in attachment C, amending ordinance 2021-06 as previously amended to incorporate the Washoe County Tahoe area plan amendments.
Thank you.
Second.
Hitchcock with a second. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Tracy, back to you.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Marilis O'Neil?
No.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Same with the setback. Sorry. Same, same issue with the setback.
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich? Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Tishera?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yeah.
Chief Drennan?
Yes.
Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that motion also passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Congratulations, Washoe County staff, and good luck on your governing board presentation in December. Okay. That concludes our public hearings for the day, but we do have some reports to cover. We're at 12:09, so I'm going to ask us all to be brief if we can. And I'm coming to you, Mr. Hester, when you're ready for the executive director report.
Ready, Mr. Chairman. Items from your last meeting were information items, so nothing to report on follow-up action at the governing board. At your next meeting, you have four items. It's going to be a lot of substance. So we are planning that it will be a longer day. We'll have lunch for you. And we will actually try to be a little bit celebratory with it. So it won't just be pizza on the table. Thanks to Tracy Campbell, who is a staunch advocate for the APC members to have good meals and comfortable meetings. I, I don't know. I don't want to go that far, but maybe, maybe air quality implications and we haven't done the proper analysis of that. The items will be the housing policies. You asked for those to come back, Mr. Oling, and so we have a workshop with the board next week where we're going to get, refine the items that we want to propose, go into the EIS, we'll come back for your input on that as well. Amendments to the shoreline. There's a series of, I would say minor, but nothing shoreline ever seems to be minor. We have the vehicle miles traveled policy and the project EIA project impact assessment tool coming back. Dan Seegan will present that. We have a minor amendment I'll be presenting on the introduction to the threshold standards and regional plan. I'm sure that one will fly through. No problem at all. Those of you at the local governments have already seen the map that goes in that. But those are the items coming up. And then probably the most important thing that will come out of the executive director's report today is I invite my colleague, Thea Schwartz, to come up here and tell you about the annual scholarship.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I'm Thea Schwartz, the communications specialist for the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. And I'm here to share an update on our Lake Lapper Environmental Scholarship. Each year, this scholarship provides an incredible opportunity to support the next generation of environmental leaders in our region. It's funded through generous donations from APC members, governing board members, and TRPA staff. Recipients are selected based on merit, financial need, and their commitment to environmental work. Last year, thanks to your contributions, we awarded a total of $3,000 to outstanding students from South Tahoe and North Tahoe High Schools. Juniper Brand, who went on to the University of Utah to study environmental management. And Samantha Carnaval, who went on to Cal State Monterey to study marine biology. Reflecting on the impact of this program, 2004, when the program was first established, the 2004 recipient, Dondra Biller, went on to earn her PhD and build a career in advancing sustainable water solutions. A true testament to the value of investing in our local students. So the 2025, 2026 scholarship cycle is now open. And we invite you to contribute once again. By contributing, you're helping to ensure that Tahoe's young environmental leaders can grow their skills and one day return to the basin to lead and give back. There's no minimum or maximum donation and every bit makes a difference. For those present in the room, I'll leave donation forms and my business card here for you. And for those online, you can contact me directly. My email is tswartz@trpa.gov to arrange a donation if you desire. Please let me know if you have any questions and thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Thea. Any questions for Thea? Thank you for being here.
And that concludes my report unless you have questions of me.
Any questions for John? Hopefully everyone heard long meeting in December. Be ready. Clear your afternoons perhaps, or early afternoon. Yep. Thanks. Okay, Graham, coming to you next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, I like to keep this body just updated on some things, especially relevant to APC. Things coming back to APC and things I've kind of reported on before. And last month, the governing board approved a settlement agreement that we negotiated with Barton Healthcare to resolve stormwater discharge violations and BMP failures that we were experiencing about a year ago and then into early winter. And as you know, I think I mentioned that before and then that that project will come back to APC because there's some code amendments in the future. I mean, obviously enforcement's a different matter, but I wanted to let you know that we did complete that settlement agreement. And Barton agreed to pay $50,000 that we had diverted to Douglas County to help fix the storm drains in the neighborhood or the storm catchment basins. And they also improved the site so that the BMPs are in much better shape, we think now to handle the storms for this winter than they were last year. So hopefully a good outcome. And then the other quick update, again, just to keep you up on litigation developments that happen. I don't try to do too many of those, but when something does happen, I'll just give you a quick update. The, the agency was involved in a slip and fall. A case we were named as a defendant in a personal injury case. Somebody fell in the parking lot in Golden Nugget. And a TRPA was named as a defendant, probably because we issued a permit. Not, not really a strong case there, but we, we were able to have the case dismissed on procedural grounds against the agency. They failed to properly serve the agency. And we engaged in briefing. We did that in-house and got it dismissed. So just a good, a good result there. I want to let you know.
That is, yeah. Thanks, Graham. Okay, APC members, I'm going to come to you for any relevant updates you'd like to share. Start with Mr. Young. Thank you, Crystal.
Yeah, just one, I know I mentioned this at the last meeting, but our board will be in Tahoe on November 18th holding their regular meeting in Tahoe and we will have the Placer County Tahoe Basin Area Plan Amendments Phase Two Housing presented and up for the board's consideration at their meeting. That's it for me.
Thank you, Crystal. Robert?
Just I took a trip to Breckenridge to see fall color in September and I want to just talk about the bus system they have there for a little bit. There's a countywide free bus system and individual towns within there, like Breckenridge also have individually free bus system that goes within the communities. Bus systems reach all the ski areas in the county. Regional county system runs 18 hours a day on about, I looked at the winter schedule, it looks like every 30 minutes from 6:00 AM to midnight. It looks like a state law in 1990 allowed the counties to impose a sales tax to fund transit. And the county voters, 2001, approved additional sales and use tax to support evening service. Ridership there, 1992 is 432,000. Last year, they had data for us, 1.9 million. And I used the system while I was there also. And so I don't, just some, I'm wondering if some of these options might be applicable here. But I mean, that, that gave an example of a well-functioning pre-transit system that's used heavily.
Sounds dreamy. Share that with Mr. Marino if you haven't. Yeah, we can do it. Mr. McNamara?
Thank you. One, I'd like to recognize Eric and Kat for the excellent presentation from Washoe County. And this continuing saga of the evacuations and fire danger is, is something that doesn't seem, it's not going to go away. Coupled with that, from other Incline residents, one of the major present problems is insurability, which I know basin-wide is a, is a problem. And I wondered if there's a means for us to address that or have a working group on it or, or any other just being responsive to our community about it. The Nevada Insurance Commissioner has been up there. The acting one, not yet, but we, we're kind of out of ideas. We don't have the fair plan or anything else, which I also understand is a problem. But I just wondered if we could consider having some kind of seminar or, or something on that and, and gather information from every county on what, what's possible. Or just different means to address it, I guess. Just a just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Yeah, it's a good idea. I don't know, Mr. Hester heard you, so he could consider that.
Of course I heard you. I will ask Kat McIntyre about that. I don't know if you remember she came and headed up the presentation on what the Tahoe Fire and Fuels Team is doing. But I know that's an issue for them. And in terms of the transportation, there is enabling legislation region-wide, which failed. There was a vote and that failed. But I know there's a lot of money raised locally on the North Shore through the TOT and TBID to run the TART system and Washoe contributes to that. And then down here, there's ongoing discussions between the city and Eldorado County and Douglas County about the existing funding and how it's used and how we can get more funding for transit on the South Shore. So like the chairman said, Jim Marino is probably the best guy to go to with all that. We are facilitating the discussions on the funding on the South Shore. So if you want me to have Kira Richardson or one of our staff doing that, talk with you, give you a call, tell you what's going more detail, because my knowledge is shallow and wide, not deep. I'd be happy to pass it on to her.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Garth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I have to report is sort of a brief update from the threshold update initiative stakeholders working group. We're in the process of updating and providing some recommendations for the thresholds on both water quality and forest health. And staff is going to be coming back to us with some additional And um, staff is going to be coming back to us with some additional modifications and changes, and so I would expect John, I think it's probably going to come back to us in January, I believe. So.
I think it's on your next agenda. Some of, some of the thresholds, uh, water quality and uh, forest health.
It's, okay.
Or maybe it's January. I can't.
I think it may be January.
Okay.
But uh, in any case, that's going to be forthcoming. And there's some interesting updates that are.
And recreation is scheduled a few months to, after that to follow.
Believe so, yeah.
Ms. Stoller?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, just a quick report out that the Division of State Lands recently closed its Lake Tahoe license plate application round. And we had two million dollars available in funding and received a little over three million dollars in applications. So we were really encouraged to see that kind of response. We'll be reviewing those applications over the winter time and making announcements probably in February next year.
Great. Thanks, Hillary. Hitch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if you've driven through town, you know this motel six go. We're in discussions with the CTC, TRP staff on what to do with the existing Class One bike trail there. Most likely, it's going to get realigned similar to um, the one that goes over Trout Creek by the college, which is this wide uh, boardwalk. So stay tuned.
It's exciting. I ride that almost daily. I'm selfishly happy. Okay, I'm going to come online here. Chief Drennan, any updates?
Uh, no updates from me. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Kate, we'll go to you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, speaking of area amendments, uh, we are currently Douglas County working on the Tahoe Douglas area plan. So it will be a newly developed plan. It basically, um, it's everything outside the South Shore area plan, so the, the rest of the basin within Tahoe within Douglas County. Um, we're having our first workshop actually tomorrow in your boardroom um, from five thirty to seven thirty. Um, so we encourage anybody that may be listening or share the news that wants to come and give input. This is our first workshop and uh, we encourage a lot of feedback um, and input from, from the community. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Kate. And last, Mr. Hill?
Uh, yeah, nothing to report uh, this month. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, I'll just have two quick updates. We are still really actively working on our area plan called the TED. We have a, we've completed the admin draft process and public, or excuse me, comments have been um, conveyed back to our consulting team. So we're working through those now to produce a public-facing draft, which we will then come share with the communities and the public early next year. And then we will begin the environmental phase. So we do have a ways to go still. Like I said before, it's a very large expansion of our existing Myers area plan to include our entire jurisdiction. So it's a big effort. Ways to go, but we're making good progress, and I'm proud of what we're doing. And lastly, I just want to say, um, tonight, there's a state of the South Shore over at STPUD. I think it starts at six, but our supervisor, Brooke Lane, is speaking tonight. It's focused on infrastructure. Uh, the city will be there. Douglas County is invited, and there may be one other. And I think it is STPUD is also speaking. So that should be really interesting. There's a lot going on everywhere, always. Everyone's working hard, taking our job seriously, and um, good updates for the community to engage in there. So I think that's it. Thank you all for your updates, and I'm going to move us into item six, which is public interest comments. Um, this is for members of the public who wish to address the APC, typically on non-agenda items. We'll go in the room first and then we'll go online. Please be aware to, uh, the APC is prohibited from taking action on items not on our agenda. And for members of the public attending via Zoom, please now click the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or dial star nine, and you'll be unmuted by a TRPA staff member at the appropriate time. So we'll come here in the room. Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org, and citizen of Incline Village. Um, I'm going to take this a little slow because I didn't have time to scratch out the comment uh, completely, but give it a shot here. So per applicable Nevada and California regulations, I am requesting preservation of records including all communications and correspondence, including emails and any other records between and among members of Placer County staff, TRPA staff and fire agencies in any way discussing the Placer County OES contraflow analysis. That would be the twenty twenty-four ladders contraflow since March of twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll let you, I guess, deal with that, Graham, if you need to. I'm not sure what to say to that. Thank you. Hi, Ann.
I, um, yeah, Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. Uh, you know, the TRPA cap on growth, it's not really. They are trying to keep track of it now in the Lake Tahoe info website, but TRPA keeps telling everybody that, don't worry, there's a cap on growth. It doesn't matter that uh, you know, there's uh, that, that the development is already capped. It's simply not true. According to TRPA's own twenty twenty-three report, the basin is supposedly ninety-two point five percent built out for housing, eighty-eight percent for commercial, and eighty-eight percent for tourist accommodation. These numbers sound comforting, comforting, but they hide the real story. TRPA counts units, not people, traffic or environmental impact. And it ignores the multipliers and conversions that quietly expand growth potential across the basin. While the CTC buys and removes old motels or homes in sensitive stream zones, the public is told it's for restoration, but those development rights aren't retired. They are banked, traded, and often multiplied. One removed unit can become up to three units elsewhere under TRP's transfer and bonus systems. So-called restoration is often just a growth transfer, not an environmental win. Meanwhile, TRPA continues to expand its incentive pools, thousands of bonus units, hundreds of TAUs, and new commercial floor area still waiting to be built. If the basin is ninety percent built out and environmental thresholds still aren't met, why is TRPA increasing capacity instead of reducing it? A true cap on growth means retiring rights when land is restored, counting real population impacts and tying all new development to threshold recovery. Until that happens, TRPA's cap on growth remains a slogan, not a safeguard. None of it is, is, you know, the bottom of the, of the uh, website. It, it doesn't relate to any reality. It just says there's, you know, six million square feet of commercial floor area and, you know, for every three hundred square feet uh, of commercial floor area, you get one TAU. Well, that TAU could be a six thousand square foot condo, as in the case of the Waldorf Astoria in, in Crystal Bay. So, you know, it, it's just, they're just playing with numbers, but they're not doing a bottom line of what does this mean with potential population? They're saying they're looking forward to uh, we're at, what, fifty-five thousand now? They're saying a hundred and seventeen thousand potential build out. Uh, they're saying uh, two hundred thousand uh, visitors now, when there's peak periods, that'll go to three hundred thousand. How is all this going to work? And we've got the, we have uh, Calneva, Waldorf Astoria, Kings Beach Development, all in Kings, all within a half a mile. That's two thousand units? You know, and the Ferrari Crown Motel. How does that all work? This, this, it's crazy group think that that's okay with a two-lane road. So I hope you guys will start thinking about, let's find out what is the real cap on growth. What do they mean? Thanks.
Thank you, Ann.
I'm John Epalito. Um, again, motion one that you guys just approved, no significant effect. It's unbelievable. Um, anyone who lives on the North Shore that I've spoken to about the new TRPA regional plan knows no significant effect is simply not true. Thank you, Ann, Doug, Pam, and many others for speaking up. Brandon, thank you for mentioning the risk of wildfire. Unfortunately, by promoting overdevelopment in town centers, stating it mildly, what TRPA is actually doing is putting people at risk unnecessarily. For example, Cat mentioned consent condensed development. As I understand it, that's where employees live and walk within one half a mile of a place of employment or the bus stops. How will those people with no transportation escape the basin when we have our next fire? Especially if it's a fire like Palisades, Lahaina, or the Paradise Fire. Please, keep in mind, Palisades and Lahaina had much less fuel than we have here in the basin. I don't understand how the TRPA can simply overlook this issue. Unless it's that middle school logic I mentioned earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments in the room? Seeing none, Catherine will go online, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no hands raised online to comment.
Okay, I'll close public comment. Thank you for those comments, and we only have one remaining agenda item. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please. Thank you, Garth. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned at twelve thirty-four. One, two, three, four. Go out and enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you all.